Interface with it.
I will double check on the, all right, Cody, jump on in.
Hi, Cody Blurb, Assistant to the City Manager. My understanding is it's in a few weeks, I don't, I'm sorry, I don't have the date off the top of my head, but the last two years it's been funded through a staff budget, through Armando's Equitable Process Budget and has been funded at a table level there. I think three years ago, so this will be the second year that we've done, that we've sponsored it that way. Three years ago, I think we sponsored it partially with the City Council sponsorship budget, which is probably why it's still lingering there. I think it was a split between council and the City Manager's office at that time. I think that invitation went out, but that was right toward the end of COVID and I don't remember. I think it was not quite the formal gala that it is now.
Okay.
If I remember correctly.
That makes sense. I guess I just, again, I just didn't know what it was. So I guess it would be nice if we could get some more information about the organization, especially before their gala this year, so we could understand, you know, what they do and how we could participate and support it, if, you know, if that makes sense for us.
Will do.
So I did like some of the organizations that focused on people getting off their feet, being self-reliant. That's the ones I am supportive of. So we break the cycle. We're not just giving stuff all the time. They're actually having to do something to get what they get. And also that they do something for our city, like the ones you just talked to, if it's in Denver, and how much is it helping our city? Those are the things I'd like to focus on.
Counselor, did I see your hand?
Yes, um, so thank you for listing out the sponsorships. And I know I've provided feedback a few times throughout the years. I learn how to approve these and what we normally approve them at. Do we have a list of everyone that is not recommended? Because I guess I could say yes, I approve, they all seem like good organizations to me. And then what am I comparing it to? And then the same with the amount, you know, I saw the numbers, what they asked for versus what we recommend we give them. Do we have a history of what we usually give them? That would give me something to compare to, to make a better decision. I guess having some historical knowledge, or maybe Mayor, you have more knowledge that you'd like to share about these.
That's where it comes to, if they're gonna do a sponsorship for golf. I mean, I want them to tell us, we're doing one. Which one do you want us to sponsor? And what level are you looking at? And then we come back and say, if that's too rich or not. So I just think that's fairer than we get five different causes. And we can go to any of those on our own, which some of us do. But what the city actually sponsors, I believe you get one bite of the apple, right? And it just changes from whatever they do. A golf sponsorship can be different than the gala or whatever else they have, so.
Can I ask you a question? Because you said recommended versus, and so like, the Human Services Board had recommended versus, or requested versus recommended?
Mm-hmm.
And ours just has the amount. Were you looking at the Human Service one, or are you looking at the council sponsorship?
So you're right, the one that I'm looking at right now just has amount. But I could swear when I looked this up over the weekend, it had.
Different?
Yeah, so I'm not sure right now.
Well, and that's fine. I just, I wanted to make sure that I'm tracking what you're saying.
Yeah.
I know, like, in the, in past, most of the, and I think that's kind of the point the Mayor and I were hitting at, was council sponsorships, in my experience, a lot of these were things that were like, they did it last year. So like, council turnover, always there's, you know, a lot of questions because maybe you hadn't been to them, or they don't make sense, or maybe there's an organization you think that council should put on there that isn't. So, so I just wanted to make sure that I was tracking on the right thing. The other thing that I would just point out to everybody, to the Mayor's point, one of the things that I think that council has been trying to hone in on in terms of by, you know, more than one bite at the apple is, are we doing something for the sponsorship? And then is that same organization doing something through Human Service Board? Which a lot of times they do. I mean, and I've heard different opinions on it, depending on the organization. But just, you know, food for thought as you look through them.
Yeah, I mean, that's the thing, they all sound good to me, but what do I have to compare it with, right? So, and then I guess my other question is, this has come up a little bit, but throughout the year again. But is this the one time of year that we approve all of them? And then what happens if, if organizations come to us later in the year? Do we turn?
We get emails.
Right, like, we get these random emails, and so, yeah, how does it all?
You should usually harsh with them.
Well, and that's the contingency part, why I want to make sure that we have an upgrade on some of those ones that we know are gonna ask for more.
Yeah.
If I could add a little, a little context, so the, on the sponsorships list, so that's essentially like a preapproval list, right? So if it's on, if it's on this list and council has a desire to go or indicates to staff that, that they would like to attend something like this, we'll approve that and we won't, we won't go to an email. So then if we receive a request either from council or we receive it from the community for something that's not on essentially a preapproved list, that's when we'll take it to an email for you all to decide if you want to use that contingency for it.
And I just want to say loud and clear right now, before I forget, because it comes so early in the year. The last two years, Rolst- Rolston House?
Mm-hmm.
Has been sold out and we have had to fight for a ticket or to get a table, even though we're a sponsor. So whoever makes those calls needs to put in a reservation for 2025 and make sure we have a table because it's the best event of the year. And we've had to, I don't know why we've had to fight because somebody's not getting it in soon enough or whatever, but now's the time to get our RSVP in.
And then lastly, sorry, I'll finish up real quick. So, and then, so this, again, to reiterate, is this like our final chance to say yes to all these organizations? Does it happen once a year? Can you explain the approval process for me, just high level, for all the orgs?
Can I verify, are you looking at the council sponsorships list?
Yes.
Okay, so this isn't your final, this isn't your final time to look at this. So this will go through with the budget process as well. But this is what we're gonna build into the proposed budget, right? The feedback that we hear tonight, and then after the budget's proposed, if there's additional feedback, we can certainly take that into account and make additional changes. So it's not your last, it's not your last attempt. And again, just if it's not on the preapproved list, next year when we get into the year, we'll send you an email to ask if that's something that council wishes to participate in.
And then how much is our contingency?
Is there, at the bottom, it's $8,000.
Oh, you're right, okay. So if I say yes to all of this, then we have $8,000 to give to whomever else for the rest of the year, if I understand correctly?
Correct.
That is all very helpful. Thank you.
Didn't we have like 13 before, last year? Didn't we have 13,000 last year for this, for this year contingent?
Nope.
It was eight?
Eight thousand.
Okay.
Yeah, I actually have a question on A, on item A. So is this the same, so I was asking about ARPA funds when we did our strategic planning? And I was asking about a specific million, because I know that Arvada, at one point, we were going to partner with a navigation center. And in that area, they're putting in transitional housing. But they bought a building and that's public now. They bought a 44,000 square foot building. And so instead of doing our own thing, I think, like I was talking about, then it'd be great if we could partner. Is this the same million that I was asking about at the strategic planning, or is this?
So the city has, had identified a million dollars for, for that purpose. It was not from ARPA funds.
Oh, okay, I thought it was from ARPA funds.
Separate dollars.
Okay, so this is completely separate. Okay, I just wanted to be clear, but the good news is they did buy a building. It's the old Arvada College, so it's in a very good location for Westminster. And so if we could partner on that, I think it'd be fantastic, yeah.
Counselor Zadi?
So do we have an update, though, on that partnership? Because we had asked in April in the strat planning, what has been, what has occurred since April in terms of the partnership since then?
It's one of those things Judy probably needs to catch up on.
Yeah, let me find out, Counselor, thank you. Sorry, to be clear, the partnership with respect to that Arvada Center specifically?
Yeah, to coordinate with their City Manager.
Yep.
Counselor DeMott?
On the sponsorship, the other thing I'm curious at looking at, because I know originally we started doing after proms and we wanted to make sure we were getting all the after proms for the high schools inside Westminster, those that serve Westminster students. Have they been utilizing that? Did last year, did all of them take advantage of that?
I do not know, I'll stop my head.
You give back to me, I'm just curious, because it's, I guess my concern as I look at it is making sure the same thing, that they knew that that was available. Because I think that we made a purposeful move to say we wanted to fund that for all the schools. And I'm just not sure, you know, if they were made aware that that was available to them. So if we're gonna, I still support having it in there, I just want to make sure that they know that's available because, you know, for those events to keep a safe place for the kids after prom is, is a good spend of $600 in my mind.
That's right, Ellen.
So I was gonna talk about the ARPA funds, too. Wasn't that, we were designated to do the landscaping around this building? If we choose not to do that, can we use it for something else? Like roads or fire? A priority?
Yes, council could choose to reallocate those funds. I don't know if a contract has been signed or what is, what's taken place there. So I, I can't speak with certainty, but.
Okay.
Yeah, if there were not some other obligation, those could be reallocated.
So Counselor, we can provide you, all of council, with an update on that project and how, as Mr. Lindsay said, if we expended any funds on that, and if so, how much? And if we have a contract commitment, if so, what is that? And then that, we'll just provide that to you for information.
Okay, because I think there's other priorities that are bigger than that to me.
My questions were on this council sponsorship list. Just following up on Counselor DeMott's question about the high schools. I did notice the academy wasn't on there, and I know that's a high school. So if they are taking advantage of it and we want to include the high schools, maybe we also include that one. It is a charter school. And then I would just ask that when the, the asks for additional funding or sponsorship come in, if, I think we've maybe been doing this sometimes, is, just referencing if this is an organization that requested grant funding, received grant funding? Just that we, you know, like, maybe they didn't receive, it would be nice to know if they requested grant funding and we weren't able to give them anything, but they're asking for sponsorship and our contingency. That would be helpful to know, if they already received a grant and/or if they're already on our sponsorship list, so that we just have that cross-checking.
Mayor?
Yes.
Can I come back around to the irrigation, or the, excuse me, the ziriscaping question? As my staff inform me, further down in the staff reports, the update on the project. So of the $500,000 that was committed to the City Hall ziriscaping project, we've currently spent $39,965. The project's at 60% design, moving towards 100% design. Construction is anticipated to begin after the contract is awarded in the fall of 2024. The project's expected to be completed by quarter two of 2025.
Final thought, and I don't think we'll try to add it for this year because we're still getting up and running, but I'd love to see our new Kiwanis Club, hopefully included, if they get on their feet this year. They've been establishing their Westminster chapter, which is really exciting. And so I know they've got all the paperwork through at this point. And so there's, they've already started a lot of volunteer work this year. Maybe next year, I'd like to just talk about it now, to maybe next year add them on.
If they have something, I mean, we don't support just to support.
Right, 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 no, I know.
All right, anything else? Let's go on to presentations.
All right, excellent, thank you, Mayor. The first presentation tonight is the 2024 State and Federal Legislative Presentation. And Erin Farider is here to introduce our two consultants, Amy Atwood and Mike Dino, I believe. Excellent.
Cuddling close. Good evening, Mayor, May Pritham and counselors. We are here tonight to provide an update on the city's state and federal legislative programs. Amy Atwood of Atwood Public Affairs leads the state's lobbying efforts based upon the legislative policy. She's represented the city since December 2016. Just as a side note, we will be also returning this fall in quarter four as a preemptive measure for the 2025 session to review the legislative policy and protocols, so that we're all on the same page as the session begins. With that, turn it over to Ms. Atwood.
Great, thanks, Erin. First, I want to start by saying thank you for the privilege of representing the city before the legislature. It really is an honor and I just, I'm so thankful that you allow me that opportunity. So this evening, I will provide an update on the recent legislative session, give an update on ongoing work during the interim, and discuss potential legislation that we'll see in 2025. This year, there was a total of 778 bills. That is more bills than we've seen in any of the recent years. Of the 778, I'm sorry, 778, 158 of those, we closely monitored. And what does that mean? Closely monitored for the city. So that involves speaking with stakeholders, attending committee hearings, and reviewing legislation and amendments, and moving to active engagement if need be through all of those conversations. We actively engage on 71 bills. Active engagement means we've taught, we talk to legislators. Again, we collaborate with stakeholders like CML, chambers, lobbyists. We engage staff here and get their feedback if there is need for amendments. From that point, depending on what those impacts are, then we bring those bills forward to you for positions. And City Council took a formal position on 16 bills. So that was either support, oppose, or amend on 16 bills. On the bills you took and amended, positioned, we obtained the vast majority of the amendments that you asked for. It was a really successful session for the city of Westminster when it came to amending the different bills that you wanted us to. I met with staff at least once a week throughout the session. So we have our weekly calls, but often we have legislation that comes in during the week. And so we will be pinging each other back and forth on text, phone calls, emails, because there's a lot of information that goes back and forth. And in our weekly meetings, we discuss new bills, different amendments, staff feedback, what we've seen from staff, also recent council discussions and priorities, and what are the political dynamics around all the bills. Erin mentioned the policy statement. That is our guiding document. And as Erin said, it's coming to you this fall, it comes to you every fall for revisions. And every bill that comes across, we look at through the filter of that policy statement. There are 15, sorry, 17 different policy priorities in that document. So it really is, it really is the guiding light for us when we look at bills. So if you, if you want to change things, we take that seriously and will for sure take that forward to the legislature. I just encourage you to take a look at that, because that's what we're using in our decision-making, bringing bills forward to you. Let's see. Westminster certainly is one of the more active cities when it comes to legislation. Westminster's been very active over the years and that hasn't stopped. Westminster is looked at by CML and different stakeholder groups because the feedback comes back so quickly from staff and it's solid feedback. And so I just want you to know that your presence at the Capitol is known, not just amongst our delegation, but really amongst the legislature as a whole and also a trusted source for information. And I'd like to give a shout out to staff, to Chief Halbert, Judge Lon Tyne, budget and policy staff, and the land use staff. They put in, everyone put in enormous amount of time this session. And all, we were texting back and forth when we needed immediate answers or, or we would get questions from the Governor's Office. What does this mean? And what does Westminster think of this? And we could go back to staff and say, you know, how does this fit within the parameters of the amendments that you're looking for? And to be able to give solid information back. So I just wanted to give a shout out to them, because they were, they're definitely right there and have your backs. Let's see. So let's talk about 1313. That was the big, the big land use bill. And we had biweekly meetings throughout the interim. So throughout this time last year, we had biweekly meetings with the Governor's Office and the sponsors. And then during session, those moved to weekly. And planning staff was on every single one of those calls. And so right there, they were in the mix the whole time. And we provided feedback every time, every draft that came across. Staff saw and gave, gave their feedback on that. Same with amendments, we would get like these amendment packets. And staff would, they wouldn't be within the bill. It would be an amendment here, you know, citing different things and, but staff would take the time to go back and forth and look at that. We work, we work well with CML, but sometimes CML is ready to make a compromise when we're not. And sometimes CML will take the lead on an issue. So say like within 1313 HUTF, that if we didn't do the things in HUTF, the stick wa, I'm sorry, we didn't do things in 1313, the stick was that we wouldn't receive our HUTF dollars. Well, that impacted all local governments, and so CML took the lead on that. We led on the water, wastewater, and infrastructure issue within that bill. And Westminster was at the forefront. We provided the language, we met with the Governor's Office twice. And keep in mind, the Governor's Office was really the driver behind it. But we always kept the sponsors in loop. Anytime we emailed with the Governor's Office, the sponsors were also in the loop. But the language that ended up in that bill related to the infrastructure came from Westminster. And that was the nonstop lobbying and pounding the table that this is a real problem. We don't have the water, we need to have an exemption. And so, and that was a priority issue, issue for council. So the language that made it into the bill is slightly different. It, it's still the same intent that, that we had and proposed. Governor's Office felt like it could create a loophole the way that we had it drafted, so they just changed it a little bit. But you can, you can be proud within that bill that Westminster, Westminster's voice was heard and we were able to lobby, successfully lobby, and really look out for the city, just knowing how important the water, the water issue is here to the city. Let's see. My approach at the legislature is one of respect and collaboration and always a willingness to work together. And it's been that way the whole time that I've represented Westminster. And Westminster's never been boxed out of a conversation. Even the hard conversations of law enforcement, public safety, water, transportation, human services, courts, we've never been boxed out. And that's because I, I go forward with respect and collaboration and willingness to work together, but so does staff. So the chief does, the judge does, in different, like, CML meetings and Dr. Cog. That's how you all also present. And so the voice that Westminster has down at the Capitol, it is really valuable. Okay, looking at, in particular, land use and what we see coming. CML right now is not looking at proactive legislation to change the intent of either 1313 or 174. 174 was more the planning, the planning bill. They are not looking at proactive legislation. They are in a wait-and-see position right now to see what the maps look like in October. So the maps are supposed to come out that will detail or show what is our hog, what are the, what are the areas? And if those maps go along with the intent that, that was said during the legislative session, then CML will not be bringing forward any, any proactive legislation regarding the intent. Now, if there seems to be conflict with the bills and what was said, they're still leaving open, leaving open the opportunity for proactive legislation on that. Westminster is taking the lead on, Westminster is, sorry, taking the lead on the conflicting language in both of those bills. So 1313 has some conflicting language and dates and there are places that need clarification, same with 174. And then between the two bills, there's conflict as well. And so Westminster is leading the information gathering. Andrew Spurgeon, who's with Long Term Planning, has put together a document that details every section of the bill. It doesn't just say, well, it says this. I mean, it is so detailed, so it's easy to go to and to see where those changes need to be made. So we've shared that with CML. CML is currently looking at that. They have not started to put their list together. So we're in at the beginning and they'll compare theirs to ours. So know that we're on the forefront of trying to clear up some of the, I mean, there are just a lot of conflicts. And then we also have some, some governor staff that has made presentations since the bill passed. And there's some conflicting language from one slide to another slide in those presentations. So just getting, just getting that clarification, we all need the clarification, not just the city Westminster, so it benefits everybody. So council takes positions on introduced bills. Council hasn't ever taken a position on an, on a draft bill because they change so much up until introduction and then, of course, they change after introduction. Some of the jurisdictions, local jurisdictions around here, local governments do take positions on draft bills. And so if that is something that you want to discuss as we get into the fall, we can discuss who's doing that and the pros, pros and cons. Sometimes maybe council feels that you feel out, out of the loop because we're coming to you once the bill's been introduced, when there's been a lot of work on, on the front end of it. And so working together to figure out how you feel more in the loop as well is something I think I'm certainly committed to, looking, going forward and going into 2025. And, okay, so what are we doing during the interim? It's busy. There are 29 different committees that are meeting during the interim. There are 14 year-round committees that are meeting and 15 interim committees. Every one of those committees can bring bills forward. So we monitor all of those committee, committee hearings. And committees, those committees, particularly the interim committees, will be presenting their bill ideas during August. So this month, every committee will be hearing about bill ideas from the members of the committee. And the committee will then vote if they should get that drafted to see what it looks like on paper. Most interim committees are allowed five bills and they can have 15 that are, that are drafted. September and October is the time where those committees actually vote on what the five bills are that they're going to take, take up. So they go into the session with really some oomph behind them because like Transportation Legislative Review Committee is a huge committee. And so when you have that, it's House members, Senate members, it has a lot of momentum. But those other 10 bills that were drafted, that were not picked up by the committee, will often be picked up by the legislator that asked for it to be drafted. So those committee hearings are a trove of information for what we see will be coming. And we also get to see what those drafts. And we also get to see what those drafts look like because those drafts are posted. So it's a great starting point as well to see what is on paper. So we also have, I also have conversations and meetings with legislators all throughout the interim. So just because we're not in the building, we're and it gets dis going to come forward, but rarely does a bill come forward that we haven't heard that is already coming forward and make contact with the legislator. As you know, Democrats have a super majority at the Capitol. Uh, within the House, it is technically a super majority. Uh, in the Senate, the Democrats don't have a super majority by one seat. So where we may see some, some changes, um, is within the Senate, and if the Republican lose, loses ones, if they lose one seat, it will become a super majority in both chambers. So that, two years ago, it was the balance of power in the Senate. This year, it's, will the Democrats take the super majority in the Senate? We will see leadership changes in the Senate. President, Fenberg is term limited. So we'll get a new Senate president. Ballot measures. They're under review and they're, and then they're othering signatures. The, the absolute deadline of when we will know what makes the ballot will be September seventh. So after Labor Day, we'll have a really, uh, we'll know what is making the ballot. And on some of the bills that we think are, that we know are coming forward, one in particular is construction defects. So defects, um, it died this year. There were, um, opposing bills, competing bills, they both died. Representative Byrd is committed to bringing a defects reform bill back. She has very strongly said it is not going to look like the bill that was introduced this year or what it looked like when it died. She is having stakeholder meetings, she's pulling together her own coalition. She is not, she's not just relying on the HOA coalition to write the bill for her. She really does believe that there is movement to be made within that space. And I want to just, I skipped over this whole page. Make sure we go back because this is the successes page. So let's just talk about three more successes. One was, um, on ten seventy-nine, which addressed emergency commitments for behavioral health. We were granted an amendment on that that limited, limited jail use as a last resort. And Chief Halbert pushed really hard on that. I pushed hard on that, on that. And that was, that was the amendment that you asked for. So that is certainly a success. This year, on eleven fifty-two, was the ADU legislation that we supported and that did pass. As well as eleven seventy-eight, it failed and you opposed it. And that allowed, that would have allowed local governments to establish pesticide sale and use regulations, so then it would have been a patchwork all over the state. So those are a couple more successes. When we look at the columns of wins and losses, we, we had, I did them out today, we had seventy percent on the wins. And that other thirty percent, the bills actually died. We had asked for amendments on those bills and didn't get the amendments. And then in the end, the bill died. So it was a good year. With all of that information, do you have any questions? Ms. Rosati?
What are the, um, the six that turned in signatures, the six ballots?
I thought you might ask that. Because I printed it and have it. Okay.
It's like in our hearts, Amy.
Okay. Those that are under review are the ones that you're asking about. Um, one oh eight, which is another, uh, valuation for assessments, property tax bill. That's getting a lot of press. Um, concerning eligibility for parole, school choice and K twelve, establish qualifications and registration for veterinary professional associate, funding for law enforcement and concerning the conduct of elections. So those are the six that have turned in their signatures and they're going through the signature process. Do you want to know the other eight? Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. I just wanted to, well, one, thank you for all the work that you conducted over the past year and that you're already doing for the upcoming legislative round. I'm definitely very interested in construction defects and, um, would love to see, I, I think the one that was offered up last, in this last legislative session was crafted by people who I, I think are well-educated around what works to get insurance companies to invest back into condos. So, um, I hope that we can keep a strong eye on that one and just, uh, make sure that the one that's coming up is going to be useful and actually get us what we want, which is condos, middle income housing. So anyway, I just, and if there's any, like, early information we can get, get on that, that would be great.
Great, Councilor DeBart.
On note of the construction defects, uh, whenever you talk to her, gratitude to Rep. Byrd for that because I know that she worked on that here. And that's the whole reason that we're able to do what we're doing. So I'm glad that she's working on the fix where session staff, because I think that and other parts that I think make it useful for to have them part of that conversation. And I push that as an to choose a couple conversations.
Yes, thank you so much. Uh, I did have a question around, uh, the hundred fifty bills that we monitor. How do we decide which of those, because we said we took positions on sixteen of them? What does that process look like?
So it, it goes back to your legislative policy statement. So all seven hundred and seventy-eight bills are first filtered if they have an impact on the city. So we weed out bills that don't have any impact on the city. And then those that do, we look at them and see, are they in conflict with the legislative policy statement? And then from there, we track those that have any, you asked about the hundred and fifty-eight. Any that have an impact, we track. And then from there, if it has a negative impact, usually, we will look at that, get staff feedback, find out what changes are, and then bring those forward. Seventy-eight, um, that we actively monitor have an impact on the city. Thank you so much.
Oh, I just want to say thank you. Um, I'm definitely interested in, um, the same construction defect bill, but, um, I just want to say thank you for your work.
Thanks.
I just want to say thank you for all your work. Um, and I think to city manager, I see where some of us got frustrated over the last two years. Um, and have some suggestions for, um, because it isn't Amy. She's working hard and informing our staff somehow. And I, I have to preface this, this is not a criticism. This is just how it's felt sitting in these seats. Because we do do go to Dr. Cog, I go to Ag Cog, I go to, um, NADA, I go to Northwest Metro Mayors, um, I go to Metro Mayors. And would hear things that it took a month to hear here. So it's obvious to me. Internally, it's being talked about, but it isn't being filtered down to us. And so if there's a better way, whether, if it's the phone call once a week, um, we get two people on there. Um, I don't know what that answer is, but I, the last two years, I got more information and understood the bills coming forward because we did talk about the drafts and, and is there any language that we needed and to change and all of that. And I understand staff's doing that, but we aren't getting anything back until we have our, I can't even think of how often we met this year to hear all of this. Um, so, excuse me, I think it's all in how we're going to communicate internally with council. Because we're the ones out in the trenches trying to represent to, um, have CML representatives and stuff and, and it just is helpful knowing, sort of where you're at at pinpoint instead of waiting a month or six weeks. And it's like, oh, well, that's old news because of where we've been in our meetings. So, but thank you for all your hard work.
And lastly, I just want to say my door is always open. I've communicated with each of you individually, whether that was text, email, ran into each other at the Capitol, um, phone calls. I'll be reaching out to you again here shortly in the next couple of weeks to set up individual meetings. As well as if there are any legislators you want to meet with, I'm happy to coordinate that and chase them. So you don't have to deal with that. And it doesn't just have to be our delegation. If there are others that you want to meet with, just let me know. They're happy to meet and we'll, we'll get them pinned down on a date and time.
Oh, yes. So maybe you represent with Byrd, because I was just writing her, but if you're gonna I would just, yeah, that would be great if we could talk to her about what her thoughts are and how we can support the work.
Councilor DeBart?
One other thing I wanted to bring up as part of this conversation, and maybe it's something we look closer at with our legislative policy, is, uh, funding around senior resources.
Yes.
Um, I know that our inclusivity board has been working closely with, uh, Chris Lynn over at, uh, Senior Resource Center. And that's how we found out about the bill that, you know, I don't think ended up making it through, but there was a desire from that group. Um, and I think it really aligns with a lot of council goals as far as some of those senior resources that we potentially would like to see dollars behind. So, um, and that really is where, you know, there's good opportunity for that in my mind is at the state. So if we could make that as a topic as we go into those conversations, I'd appreciate it.
And if I can just pile on to that, the, you, with Dr. Cog's budget being cut with, um, the triple A, um, I would just love to support any legislation that might move forward to get them more money.
Anything for us? That's it? Thank you so much.
Right, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Amy.
I realize I forgot to introduce myself when I started, jumped right in. Um, so I'm Erin Farid, our Policy and Budget Administrator. Mike Dino and Mara Sheldon from Squire, Patton and Boggs provide our federal lobbying services for the city. Most recently, their focuses have been on finding funding or connecting us with funding opportunities for infrastructure projects. Mike and Mara have supported the city since twenty twenty-one. And tonight, Mike is here with us to walk us through his federal lobbying efforts on behalf of the city.
Thanks for having me, I appreciate it. Uh, I've been with my firm, Squire, Patton and Boggs for twenty-seven years. And I'm a North Denver native. For some of those who don't know me, I grew up just about, uh, well, depends on the traffic, but anywhere from ten, twenty minutes just, uh, south of here by Sloan's Lake. So spent a lot of time in Westminster over my life and, uh, used to play in the old Skyline Basketball League where, uh, Westminster Warriors were one of our rivals for Regis, the Regis Raiders. So, uh, that's some ancient history, but, uh, some good history. I'm going to start out with funding. Um, Congress, right when we started representing Westminster, and I work with a lot of municipalities and counties and local governments, one of our clients, longstanding clients is RTD, uh, and as well as Denver Water, so work with utilities, transit agencies. Um, but, uh, one of the things that a lot of local government organizations used to rely on were specific project funding for things they wanted in the federal budget, known as earmarks. Well, earmarks went away for about ten years. And they came back right around, uh, the beginning of the pandemic. And in the Senate, they're called congressionally directed spending. In the House, it's community project funding. And, uh, in, in the first year, fiscal year twenty twenty-three, which is, uh, two fiscal years ago now for the federal government. And, and real quickly, I think a lot of you may know, but to remind you, the fiscal year for the federal government always starts on October first of every year. So the next fiscal year for the federal government is fiscal year twenty twenty-five, starting October, October first. We're currently in fiscal year twenty twenty-four. But in fiscal year twenty twenty-three, uh, we're able to work with our congressional delegation to get three million dollars for, uh, the Federal Parkway multimodal, uh, transportation improvements, uh, between one hundred and twentieth and one hundred and twenty-second avenue. Uh, our delegation at the time at Pearl Mutter and our two US senators were very supportive of that. Uh, in the current fiscal year, uh, twenty twenty-four, we're able to get almost two million dollars for water resources, uh, in, in Westminster. Again, uh, our, our new, uh, council, um, uh, our new congressional delegation members, uh, uh, the Congresswoman Caraveo and, and Pedersen were very supportive of this funding as well as our two senators. So in, in, in two of the years so far, we worked with you, uh, five million dollars, uh, we've been able to get specifically earmarked for Westminster. Now this year, we went after some more water resource funding. And it has not appeared in either of the House or the Senate funding bills at this time, nor will we expect it to appear in those bills. Um, those bills haven't passed, I'll talk about that in a second. Uh, because the federal bills for FY twenty-five, um, are still winding their way through Congress. So, uh, I think, you know, by and large, it's good to see that our delegation is supporting Westminster on specific projects. And we'll go through a process again, uh, uh, to figure out, uh, coordinating with staff on what you'd like to see, uh, for what will soon be fiscal year twenty twenty-six, uh, that will begin shortly after twenty twenty-five's calendar year ticks January one. A few other things I'd like to touch on, Mayor, I know, uh, you pay particular attention to Raze Grants. Uh, this is the Rebuilding America Infrastructure with Sustainability and Equity Grants. That is a major grant, up to twenty-five million dollars. Uh, your Northwest Mayors have been successful with that on Highway nineteen last year. Uh, I know you had another proposal for Highway seven that, uh, didn't make it through. Only six of these grants were, were successful in Colorado. Uh, there were over a thousand applications nationwide, uh, totaling thirteen billion. Um, interestingly enough, Congresswoman Caraveo saw three projects in her district. Uh, one in Thornton, one in Greeley, and one in Brighton. The rest of them were spread in Pueblo, uh, the northeastern plains in Washington County and in, and southwest, southwestern Colorado on one of the U tribes. So, um, uh, I, I will say that, um, you guys are very politically astute. You know, Congresswoman Caraveo's in a very competitive congressional seat. It is one of the top targets for both the Republicans and the Democrats in this election. And so, uh, she's seen a lot of funding come her way. Um, and in particularly the Raze Grant, that's where there was some success in her district. I also want to say about the Raze Grant, as well as other grants that we've seen through the infrastructure law, the bipartisan infrastructure laws, we're in the third year of the bipartisan infrastructure law. There's five years in that law. Um, Mayor, I know you know Um, Mayor, I know you know very well, you'll get a couple more bites at the apple for the RACE grant, as well as other significant grants like Infra and Mega that support big transportation projects. Now, if we do see a change in the White House, uh, we may see a change in some of these programs too. Uh, but that'll remain to be seen. And for the time being, these were laws that were passed by the federal government. Uh, and, uh, at this point, as we sit here today, we should be able to depend on those being there for funding opportunities down the line.
We need to know the two transportation groups that we belong to, the Smart Commute that goes to Brighton and the Northwest that goes to Boulder, Longmont, that area with Highway seven. Um, we're both talking together about joining together on that, the next, the, if we're gonna go for the RACE grant still on seven, showing the distance and the amount of people together instead of just this part of it, we're thinking they need to see it's a whole picture.
Yeah, no, that's a great idea. And you know how important the collaboration is. It gets a lot of grading. So, um, right now, you know, Congress operates year round. Unlike, uh, you know, Amy talked about the legislature, they have a very defined period, uh, usually from the first part of January through the first part of May. Uh, Congress is always in session. Uh, they serve two, 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 uh, a two-year, uh, term. We're in the under, we're in the hundred and eighteenth Congress. Uh, it will conclude at the beginning of January 2025. Uh, their biggest job is to pass a federal's budget. And, uh, they're, they're not anywhere near that. Uh, we're gonna get to the end of September, the end of this current fiscal year, 2024, and we will not have a federal budget for the next year. Uh, the Senate has passed eleven of the twelve bills out of committee. And the House has passed five bills out of their, their full House of Representatives. Uh, they don't match up real well. So we'll see what is called a continuing resolution to keep the federal government open. Um, Chris knows this well, as we get toward the end of September, we'll hear a bunch of stuff about the government shutdown. Uh, because they're, they, they do threaten that. But ultimately, they do pass what is called a CR, a continuing resolution to keep the government operational. I don't expect much to be passed as we move forward, um, uh, other than this, uh, federal budget toward the end of the year. What do we look for in the bed, federal budget? Well, particularly for cities and for Westminster, community block, dr, block grant funding, to make sure that stays in there, that's very important to you, you're an entitlement city, and you do use that money for very important things in your neighborhoods and in your community. Uh, we look at transit and transportation. Uh, capital improvement projects are important, uh, to RTD, but also to local governments who have transit-related, uh, infrastructure. And estate revolving loan funds for water is important, SRFs. Um, certainly, your community looks at the state as a partner as it relates to water. And the revolving funds are very critical to helping fund local water projects. Uh, those are kind of being eaten away by these earmarks. Uh, and our delegation's looking at a way to maybe stem that. So those funds that the state gets from the federal government for water aren't as diminished. As we look forward to, uh, other key pieces of legislation, one of the items we've been following for Westminster is the Social Security Fairness Act. Uh, this is a piece of legislation that would repeal, uh, provisions that reduce social security benefits for those who receive other types of, of benefits for retirement, such as pensions, from state and local government, uh, such as your employees. Uh, it is not, it is a piece of legislation that is sponsored, i- it's in the House of Representatives and it's sponsored by six of our representatives. Only two that haven't sponsored it are Congressman Lambordan from Colorado Springs, and of course Congressman Buck's gone, uh, but maybe Congressman Lopez will pick it up. But it's probably not a piece of legislation that will pass. I, I think there's only gonna be three pieces of legislation that pass by the end of this Congress. Uh, the budget, uh, defense authorization. The defense authorization is the lowest common denominator for Congress to show they're doing something. It has passed sixty-two years in a row. So, uh, so you can always count on that one, and if it doesn't pass, something's really wrong. And the farm bill, which has already been extended a year, uh, is important to see that probably pass, and that may pass. From a policy standpoint, but paying attention to the SAVE Act. This was the Biden administration's effort to relieve student loan debt and to create a, uh, a income-driven repayment system. If, if you have relatives, if you have student loans, if you were taking advantage of this SAVE Act, you've probably had a lot of whiplash. It's been, uh, it's been overturned a few times by local, uh, or by appeals courts, and then it's been sustained, and now again, it's in abeyance, meaning that it's on hold. Um, uh, but it has been an important thing that people have been taking advantage of. And at this point, if people have student loans, they're most likely being deferred. Um, and so, um, uh, we'll see if they'll be upheld by the courts ultimately. And of course, if the administration changes, uh, this program will probably go away. The Supreme Court had two really important decisions before they finished their term, uh, the summer term. One was the Chevron deference. Uh, interesting concept, but it basically gave deference on regulatory matters to federal agencies, uh, originally. Uh, the Supreme Court ruled that's no more. That regulatory matters could be referred to courts and not federal agencies. So what does that mean? Uh, it's hard to say right now, but it can mean that all sorts of regulations could be overturned by the courts, relating to environment, uh, certainly relating, uh, to energy, um, uh, relating to a lot of other things that maybe guide local communities. And so it's a pretty, uh, important thing to keep an eye on. It, it, it used to be that, uh, the agencies may be the last word on regulations, but that's not going to hold anymore. The courts are the last word. And also, uh, the Supreme Court upheld an Oregon's, uh, city's anti-camping ordinance. Uh, and so, uh, this is an important decision for cities, though of course, there's a recent, uh, lawsuit, uh, by, um, the ACLU in Spokane, Washington, uh, to try to enforce their camping ban. And so we'll see that probably make another, uh, way through the courts. Real quickly on regulations, uh, a few of the most recent ones. Uh, the Labor Department, I, I know the, the rain was great tonight, it was great to see it. Uh, I noticed, I came from my house in Sloane's Lake area, it wasn't raining there, but as I got towards Westminster, you guys were getting the good stuff. And so, uh, but beating the heat, the Labor Department is trying to enact, uh, more rules, uh, requiring rest periods and, um, uh, less heat exposure for employees. And so they have a draft rule they're working on there. Uh, overtime expansion went into effect July one, so workers making just under forty-four thousand will be eligible for overtime. Uh, when you get to, uh, the beginning of January, uh, that number goes up to workers making, uh, fifty-eight thousand or less will be eligible for overtime. And net neutrality, Mayor, this is one you've probably been familiar with for a long time. Net neutrality requires internet, internet service providers to treat, treat all internet users lea, equally and not charge extra for certain speed or, or certain access to certain websites. And local communities have always been into this one. They've always been supportive of net neutrality with the Federal Communications, uh, Commission. Uh, well, this has been put on hold. The FCC did pass net new, net neutrality rules, and right now, the courts have put this on hold. Uh, we'll see if it, it, it moves forward. Uh, real quickly, a few other things, just wanted to mention our congressional delegation. Uh, Senator Bennett sits on the Agriculture Committee as well as Finance Committee. Um, agriculture's important because of the farm bill, so he's been paying a lot of attention to that. He had a, a, a field hearing in July in, uh, in Burlington, Colorado. And so that'll be a focus of his. Senator Hickenlooper's on the Commerce, Science, and Transportation Committee, as well as Energy and Natural Resources. Lately, he's been focused on artificial intelligence issues. Our Congresswoman, your Congresswoman, uh, to the, uh, west of Sheridan, uh, Brittany Pedersen, sits on the House Financial Services Committee. And she, uh, is focusing on housing as part of that committee effort. Uh, I think, you know, the federal government could be a better, uh, partner on housing. Uh, they're just not quite there, but I think they're trying to get there. Uh, and then Congressman Caraveo, to the east of, of Sheridan, is on the Agriculture Committee, and, uh, she's been very involved in the farm bill. Real quickly about the congressional calendar. Uh, Congress doesn't want to be in Washington in August, so they're not there. We have the Democratic Convention starting two weeks from today in Chicago. Uh, they will resume after Labor Day. They will spend the month of September trying to get a budget bill continuation passed and probably also extend the farm bill that, that expires also on September thirtieth. They're not supposed to be in session in October. As you can imagine, that's a big campaign month. And after Election Day, they'll come back in session for the last few weeks of November and three weeks in December. Uh, and it'll all depend on what they do, will depend on how the elections play out. I won't prognosticate on what's going to happen, but it will all be affected by who will be in the White House in January and who controls the House and the Senate, uh, come the new one hundred and nineteenth Congress. So, uh, thanks for taking a moment to listen to me and my report, I appreciate it. Uh, my colleague Mara Sheldon couldn't join us tonight, but, uh, uh, I'm thrilled to always work with Westminster. Thank you for the opportunity to do so, and glad to take any questions or comments if you have them.
Anybody? You're doing so well, we are speechless.
Well, I know it's not as, you know, like, uh, hitting, you know, on the ground as, as the state stuff. But, uh, as, as Amy said, uh, uh, your staff knows how to get ahold of me. Glad to meet with you, uh, whenever, uh, need be. And again, thanks for the opportunity to work with you, uh, over these last several years, I appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody need a break?
Let's, um, go on to item B.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Item B is, uh, draft ballot language for the city charter and transition plan for implementing a geographic wards system in Westminster. And, uh, Matt Munch has joined at the table. Uh, Matt will, uh, lead us off tonight. And, uh, I can report, uh, uh, following his last discussion with council that he's done a tremendous amount of work, uh, outstanding legal work. And he's going to, uh, walk you through that. Also joining us, of course, is Pam Anderson, and thank you, Pam, for being here tonight.
Uh, good evening. Um, thank you, sir, appreciate that. And, um, but I have to say, what we have before you, uh, hopefully everybody's had a chance to review it, is a draft. A draft of one possible approach with a couple of alternatives in there and some decisions that, uh, we need from City Council as to how you want to see this go forward. Uh, I can only assure you, despite all the, the kind words that have been sent my way, deserved or undeserved, that I have no ego in this game, and we will find a way to execute whatever it is City Council needs us to do. I should have logged into my computer before. So there are a couple, um, as we were directed, we tried to make a system that would have divide the city into three different wards with two city councillors being elected from each ward in staggered four-year terms. One city council member from each ward every two years. This, uh, is going to require a couple of things to be done and a couple of decisions because there's multiple ways to do it. Uh, I hope you don't mind, I'll just jump right in. The, sort of the first, uh, and foremost decision is when to start. There are really two options to do this that are not, uh, horribly disruptive to the current system, that don't, uh, kick anyone out of office who is currently in office, which I, I don't, uh, think we could do, um, even if we wanted to. But also implement this. The, the first option is that essentially you hold a, um, that, both options have all currently elected city council members, those city council members elected at-large in 2023 will serve out their full four-year terms. The question then becomes in 2025, do you elect another group of at-large city council members to a two-year term? So then every city council member would serve until 2027, where there would be a clean slate and a new election with the wards for the first time in 2027. At that election, two city council members would be elected from each ward, the highest vote getter being elected to a four-year term, the lowest vote, or the second highest vote getter being elected to a two-year term. And from then on out, you would have staggered four-year terms for the City Council. The advantage of this is it gives more time for the wards to be carefully designed. For, it, it means that the wards don't have to be up and ready to go until the 2027 election. That is just more, more opportunity to make sure everything gets right. Disadvantages, of course, as you can see, it's a little more complicated. And it has a couple of people being elected to this strange little two-year term that is not generally what has been done. Uh, I don't see any reason why it can't be done that way, but it is just one of the options. Um, the second option also has those councillors elected to their four-year at-large terms in 2023, serving out the full length of their term. But starting in 2025, there would be wards. And three, instead of electing three city council members at-large in 2025, you would elect, or the people would elect three city council members, one from each ward, to serve out a four-year term. And then in 2027, when all of the currently elected at-large city council members' terms expire, then another round of three city council members would be elected to four-year terms as ward representatives. Thereon out, um, there would be staggered, uh, two-year terms, councillors elected from wards. The advantage of that is it's a fairly simple handover. Uh, the wards simply start in 2025 and then continue in 2027. The disadvantage is that is a fairly tight timeline. Those wards have to be established, uh, very quickly. You're not gonna get the word back from the citizens until November as to whether this amendment passes. And then I don't know, I don't know, um, Abby or Pam, if you know when the county needs to have those ward boundaries.
So as, um, we sketched out options for the plan back in March, um, for, uh, a more accelerated timeline, we would need to, um, approve maps in the spring and get those to the county to import. That itself won't take that long, but we want to make sure we get it in, to them in plenty of time in case there's any issues with the election management system and getting the voters placed in the right precincts.
So that would give, and, uh, we would have to come up with a, right now, we don't have an existing infrastructure, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I don't believe we have an existing infrastructure for establishing wards like this. This is something the city of Westminster has never done before. Uh, if you wanted to have this up and running in 2025, um, we would have a matter of months to establish such infrastructure, get it working, and get the wards established in such a way that they represent everyone fairly and divide the city into three, uh, fair parts that are compliant with all the applicable laws. Not that it can't be done, I believe you, you, you already told me that it could be done.
You have GIS, so you have that system that would be similar to the mapping that we did before. Um, layering in additional data would take more time, right? So for example, looking for things around, um, one-person-run-vote population, we can do. We demonstrated that in the advisory committee process. Um, but we'll want to look at more discrete data, um, for communities of interest and as well as racial equality.
So that is the, I'm picking sort of at random, the first issue from which we would need council. Um, for those of you following along in the book, that is all the way at the bottom, under the transitional provisions, because essentially that's where we would put this, is the transition between the current structure and the new ward structure. Uh, the second issue we would ask for your guidance on is also in those transitional provisions, and that is about term limitations. Uh, we would want guidance from City Council. So, uh, there are term limits that apply, but they only apply to the same office. We would want to declare in this charter whether or not we consider, uh, service as a council member representing a ward, uh, fundamentally the same office as an at-large city council member or a new and fundamentally different office for purposes of whether or not your service or someone's service as an at-large city council member would qualify as a term of service for a ward city council member for term limit purposes. About whether having served at, at large should limit you, uh, from serving as a ward council member. Or whether, um, clean slate, fundamentally new office, fundamentally new electorate who, who voted you into office, fundamentally new electorate who could recall you from office. Either way, I think, um, would be legally defensible. We would simply have to make our decision known. Decide whether we want that to be a fundamentally new and different office or whether we want to consider it a continuation of the same office. Other decision. Oh, I know I had it here, I got distracted by my own. Okay, we had the whether it starts in 2025 or 2027.
Population deviation.
Thank you. Thank you. Wrote a lot of stuff here. As you can see that we set in there a limit, a mathematical limit. And by we, just in terms of drafting this, to write something that would make sense. The requirements for the wards, they would have to, of course, be compact and contiguous, as compact as possible. Contiguity, we would strongly recommend that just being an absolute requirement. And I can, I can reword it to make it so. But that the wards should not differ from each other by more than 5%. There are cities that do it that way. There are other cities that do it, let's say a 15% deviation. There's one city that sets a 10% deviation. And most cities have just sort of a general requirement, generally stated in their charter, that the districts or the wards should be contiguous, compact as possible, and equal in population. And this sort of let the, the rules of the Voting Rights Act and things like that sorted out. Personally, I would argue in favor of the 5%. It is sort of the lowest one we see out there. We know that there are other cities that have managed that 5%. And it gives a solid guide rail. It's a number. Whoever, you have to, it's not just going to be this city council that will set districts. It will be city councils going on forever into the future. And a number gives a solid guide rail where they know they simply cannot exceed. There is an equally valid argument against everything I've just said that I'll let others make.
I wouldn't put it as against.
It is less, it provides less, my, the 5% or any number you put in there provides less flexibility when carving out these districts. And carving out these districts can be very, very difficult.
Yeah. So there, a legal review that municipalities often look to is the municipal perspective that's cited in the state statute, and it cites a 10%, which is what we did our committee work off of as a basis. You certainly can put 10% or 5%. I think it is less common to put that in there for one reason. One, it's very, it's, it is very certain. And I think that is very attractive from a legal perspective. From a drawing, drawing district, says the lawyer. And, and I don't disagree with that at all, and I don't have any strong objections. I do think, given the uncertainty around drawing your district lines, one of the impacts the tighter, more discreet 5% will do is it could create a situation where you have to split up a community of interest, like a neighborhood. So for example, if you go with 10%, you have a plus or minus 3,900 population to work with. And it's, it's tighter. It is more, just under 2,000 for the 5% threshold. So depending on your size, sizes of neighborhoods, I think that could be impactful with respect to community and interest and having a little bit more flexibility. I always find, fall on the side for, for communities to, to draw the lines. So if, if we wanted to do both, a 10% threshold, I think is legally defensible. And, and so I think it would give us some flexibility. And similar to the process that we've done this year, I think aspirationally, a 5% threshold is certainly what the committee was work, would, could work towards. And if we got into a situation where, you know, it impacted a community of interest, we would have a little bit more like wiggle room.
If context is helpful, in the process of preparing this, I actually went through and read every single home rule charter in the state of Colorado that has wards. The two that do use 15% deviation are Castle Rock and Golden. And as Ms. Anderson could tell you, very amusing, Golden has a really interesting way of electing people from their districts and wards. Fort Collins is the only one that uses a 10% explicitly stated in their charter. And the two that specify 5% are Louisville and Fort Morgan. So you'll see that there aren't any cities in there that are real direct allegories to Westminster when it comes to their position on the Colorado map and their population size. Fort Collins, a good bit larger, the rest of them, a pretty good bit smaller than Westminster.
And I do think since it's a charter amendment, it's a lot more difficult to work with. And so I would argue for flexibility on, on that front. But I also think that the reason you see it less with municipalities versus statutory, or legislative districts or congressional districts is because your denominator is so much larger. And you're not dealing with those discrete neighborhood situations as more around racial demographics.
And then one last decision point, although I believe staff is united on this recommendation, is a residency requirement for how long a person should have had to have been a resident of their ward to be eligible for service as city council member. The recommendation is one year, as that is just consistent with what the city already does. It seems to be fairly consistent with what other cities do and the residency requirements for other offices. The other recommendation we would have is that should someone cease to be a resident of their ward, they should be considered to have vacated their office. I bring these up because these are written into the amendment as I've currently drafted it. That said, tho- those are sort of the things I've highlighted. We're very happy, if not eager, to make whatever else other changes City Council would like to see done on this.
Okay, let's look at his four questions he gave us. Let's start with the first one, and that's, when does all of this start?
Yes, ma'am.
And any one, two, or three?
Yep.
Pro Tem?
Of course, I'm not picking just one. I guess for number one, I just have a concern about the, about people having to do an at-large election and just get two years. So I'm not overly fond of just that amount of work that it, that it takes to get there. And so, I, you know, and the other thing that concerns me about that, I guess that's the one that gives us more time.
Yes, ma'am.
To come up with the wards. The, the second option, which has the ability to sort of start it in 25, I do like the immediacy of that. I do understand the, the, the need to dive in very deeply on the wards delineation and whether or not, you know, I don't know if that can be done or not. I've seen Erie did it really fast, but they're a small, very kind of homogeneous community. And so I, you know, I, I question whether we could do it as fast. So one question I have is whether we could start the, just take the approach with number two, the option two, but apply it towards the timing of option one. So you'd have the 23 cohort go through their four years. And then in 27, no wait, oh my gosh, in, in...
Yeah, but you still have two more coming on next year.
Yeah, so I guess it would be in 25, you would just do a regular election. And then 27, you would start the boards, but with just half of them.
Oh, I, that, that is, you could do it that way. But that would have the effect of pushing it back even another two years. So if I'm understanding what you're suggesting is that in 2025, you elect another round of at-large city council members to four-year terms. And then in 2027, elect three city council members from the wards, the wards starting in 2027, who would serve alongside those existing three at-large members. And then in 2029, the second group of at-large city council members come in. There's no reason you couldn't do that. It would push things back. The wards essentially wouldn't be fully implemented. The wards would start being implemented in 2027 and would not be fully implemented until 2029.
Yeah, I mean, it's not ideal. In, in this, I had to choose an existing option, I would choose number two.
We could do, there's nothing stopping us from doing what you, doing option three. It's just a matter of whether that's what you would like us to do. That would, that would start it all in 27 and have it fully implemented in 29. And would also give that full till 27 to establish the wards.
I'm for number two, to get it off the ground. I want it done 2025.
So which one do you want?
B, what, is it B?
I, I should have, I should have actually laid it out in an A and a B, but I, yes.
That's if it passes. We don't know if it'll pass.
And that was an issue. We, we needed to make sure, not only, of course, the people pass it, but that people who are running for office would have enough time to decide what off, to know what office they were in fact running for. So 2025 would be the earliest you could start it.
Yes, with the options that were originally presented, I was a proponent for the option one because I want to really think about the impact. No matter what, I realize that we're impacting the city. But it seems to me that the impact is heavier on the councillors, which of course affects our residents who they end up electing. But the impact will be heavier on residents if we really don't take the time to do a deep dive on this ward system. And in my opinion, the ward system is really about, you know, equity and ensuring that we do this right. And so I advocate for taking the time to do it right. So I'm a proponent right now of number one, but right now, I'm actually leaning towards what we just discussed around option three, so I'm still trying to think that through. But I think I might be heavier at this point for option three and really taking the time because what have we got to lose? I mean, our city charter is what, you know, it's been around for decades, and this is a major, major impact. And I don't want us to undervalue the change that we're making. We are making a huge change, right? We're changing the way the city is set up. There's a major change with the charter. I feel like both for the folks running for office next year. I don't know how folks would even know if they could run for office with enough time to even get their campaign off the ground next year. And then around, sorry, I just lost my train of thought. Around, shoot, it'll come back to me in a little bit. But for multiple reasons, I, I just think we should take the time to do this right. Around the language for the charter itself and around making sure that we have the GIS to do that properly, but also around making sure we look at our communities properly. I really think we should take our time.
Councilor Hutt?
Yeah, I'm for option one, also because I don't think this is something that should be rushed. I think option three is too long, but I think option two is too short, and so I'm for option one.
So is that it?
To wait to hear everyone else first.
I remembered my thought, I'm sorry. So around the folks running, this is also an issue of communications, right? And so the less confusion, the better. And so I realized that option one does present a little bit of confusion for folks running, for people in the community trying to understand what's happening, et cetera. And so that's why I was thinking maybe option three would be a little better around the communication piece of like, okay, we still get four-year terms. We still, like, this is how we run things, especially if we end up voting on the other items in the way that I think we will, which is keeping, you know, receipts very similar to how they are. I feel like option three allows us to really retain the same position we've got, take the time to do it right, and it allows us to message it to the community with a little bit less confusion so that residents don't, you know, end up with accusing us of doing the process wrong. But also with false ideas of how this works. I think that we could really, it might be smoother for residents to understand what it is we're doing. And that's what concerns me too, is in the process, is how we're going to roll this out to the community so they know that we're doing this for the best interest of everyone and they know exactly what it looks like.
Councilor Demer?
I like option one, but I also like option three. My big challenge with option one is, I think, to Mayor Pro Tem's point, that's all, you know, I guess my concern about the two years is, is it going to dissuade people from running in that election? Because they may be like, you know, and I'll sit it out this time versus waiting for wards to come in. So I, I don't, I don't know if that's the right way to go. But, you know, once upon a time, if I recall right, the city did have lowest vote getter, did only get a two-year term. Is that accurate?
It happened recently, following the last recall election.
But didn't it happen like as a normal?
Yeah, we had it where, back in the early 2000s, the top, like if it was two, two or three people running, the top two got four-year terms and the third person got a two-year term.
I can think of, I, I wasn't...
Tim Kaufman was here, Herb Adgison had it many times, so...
Depending on when exactly that happened, I was either in Iraq or Korea. But I can imagine any number of scenarios that would lead that to happen. Fortunately, the, the state election laws that we reference take account of that. And that's the guidance that they give, is if you end up in a situation where you have, you know, a term like that, then the lowest vote getter of those who win gets the two-year term. So yes, that is something that I'm not surprised to hear came up more than just that one time.
So I guess my question on that, because I also am of the mindset though, that I would like to see this move, move ahead. And I'd hate to see it not fully implemented all the way until the 2029 election. So I guess maybe this is really more for you, Pam, is how hard is that going to be? If you, if you did wards for the 2025 election, like how hard of a lift is it for us to actually have well-thought-out, drawn wards? I know you kind of gave us some ideas of what they look like, so I can't imagine, I mean, you were, we're not starting blank slate, I guess.
I think you got all of brought up very valid points about 2025 from a political perspective, from a candidate's perspective. I think technically, the mapping's not challenging, right? It's more layers than we have produced so far. I would defer to GIS on how hard that is, because I'm not a GIS expert. But I think it's just, that part's not the, the challenge. You guys value the community input part. And so you have, you left open the possibility in your last ordinance of reconstituting a committee again to give you recommendations around mapping. And so we were able, I mean, I couldn't reiterate more that committee and how good they were at having these discussions and understanding the concepts. You did very well in your appointments and the values that people brought to the table. As we discussed in March, community input could also, you know, be other things. It could be council meetings and your hearings. It could be community meetings. It could be a survey or a system of drawing maps with the GIS process to have people participate more. You guys are very aspirational and in, in this ambitious project, far exceeded my expectations. So I hesitate to say it's not, not doable. I think the technical part is completely doable. And I have a great deal of admiration and respect for your community input process. Folks were really, really very thoughtful through it.
So, so with that being said, I guess here's some food for thought for the group, in just my opinion. It wasn't up until honestly the last handful of elections where people were putting in and running way ahead of time. Me probably being one of the ones, I think I was about, pretty much, I lost the 2015 election and I put papers in within two weeks. I mean, that wasn't something that happened in the past. And I can assure you, I got a fair amount of my ear getting chewed by former electeds in the city, like, you know, what the hell are you doing? So, Vi Jun being one of them. But with that being said, you know, part of this was to get some better representation. We've heard a lot about money. I don't think wards takes money out of it, however, short time does. And I feel like, you know, I think that you might see some different faces and people deciding to do it with, with the short time and the opportunity to go just specifically for their community. So I think that there is some silver lining of, you know, things we're not really thinking of. The other thing that I really am thinking of in terms of, you know, just the folks who want to see this move forward, imagine that there's going to be some excitement about wards. And if they actually go from approving this in this election cycle to actually being able to go straight into being able to vote for wards, I think that there's going to be far more participation in that process. And I think one of the most disappointing things in my mind that I realized early on is how few people actually do participate in our municipal elections. So I'd hate to, to lose that headwind if this passes. And if it's, if it's doable, like I, I imagine our community is going to step up and be excited about it if they decide this is a thing and they're not going to want to wait, you know, that many cycles to actually move forward with it. It'll, it'll be interesting at, at the least. The last thing that I would mention, I, I can tell you, there's been quite a few elections where it's been... The last thing that I would mention, I, I can tell you, there's been quite a few elections where it's been somebody who decided in, in August to throw in. Uh, well, you, um, former counselor, uh, Smith and Emmons, um, she was a latecomer and nearly won election. Actually, my first time I was July, August. So I think that you're, you know, we might spur some of that by having that short turnaround. And I think that might not necessarily be a bad thing for the community, so food for thought.
So what number?
So I, I would say one then, because of that, because of all those things. I think that you could do it.
That's B.
And you could, and I think that you could have some, uh, intangible benefits that we're not really thinking of.
Is that one or two? You mean two?
Uh, that's my fault for not getting the ones and twos. Uh, so you'd like to-
So it'd be, you would, I would say you would implement it right away. I'm, I'm open to whether or not, like, if you're gonna do it right away though, I don't know why you wouldn't have that first group, uh, be wards and have a full four years. And then the next election cycle after, um, the twenty-three people cycle out, then you would have another, uh, full four-year term for whatever ward. So I don't know what option that is in your, in your calculation.
Your preference would be to have it, uh, the first election on wards begin for three people in twenty twenty-five. Uh, that, I think that would be option two, as I, um, sloppily put it in front of everybody.
And I didn't have anything in front of me, so I have it numbered the way I do, so who knows what I'm writing down here. Um, Isadi?
Question, Pam?
Yes, sir.
When Jeffco did their redistricting, that twenty-three?
Mm-hmm.
They did the, um, basically like a crowdsourced, right? Which I heart strongly suggest we should consider here. But with the designs, everyone got the ability to design on their own, and then they kinda pulled together. So I kinda foresee like maybe this committee, the same people, we bring them in, and they be the judges of a wider spread input system, where, where everyone kinda draws and then they get to filter down for us, and then they recommend to us. That might be, but my question is, how, how many months did that take for Jeffco to do theirs?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know the exact duration it, it took. I, I can tell you that the system that they use for that, for their public input on drawing maps, I did reach out to the vendor for that. I did not hear back. So it may have been a decennial project as a nonprofit. There are other products out there we can look at, but we did use your GIS system. And there's a draw tool through your website that people could draw and do a screenshot of where they think those lines should go. So we could do a must, much less-
And cheaper.
Sparkly version of that, that I think would get us to, uh, um, you know, to some input if we could not find somebody that was willing to take on the project.
And the reason why I ask is I think the option two, where it's sooner, depending on how long that process took, we can kinda use that as a reference point. I think it was six months, I'm not sure, but I, I remember it being somewhere like half a year when they started, when the clerk started and when, and when it, and when it was over. If we choose option two, when would whatever process we come up with begin?
Well, we could start right, I, I would recommend starting right after the first of the year, um, with the first meetings, the first data. We could have data ready and presented. We can work on that the rest of this year and given, um, you know, we'll have the election results. Um, because that census data is going to be the census's data. Um, we can check in and see if there's gonna be any updates before the end of the year. Um, and start producing some information around demographics and information, a little bit more discreet. But because of the holidays after the election results, I would recommend right after the first of the year to begin. Um, I would hesitate to send an end date, but I, being optimistic, feel the first quarter, having some recommendations to you, um, is not unreasonable, um, if that is the model, given what we know about the committee members and they've, they've already had a basis of information.
And them, and that's the, they're kinda the driving, the guiding light here of my thinking because that's such a strong group of people that I think they would be able to filter pretty easily. If we did do a more crowdsourced version of this, which could take longer than three months, I'm guessing four to six months. But what would the deadline, the drop dead date be of when we would need to actually be done with it?
Yeah, I would adopt your maps no later than six months in, by, by June. Um, we can verify that with the county clerks. Uh, but what I know, they don't have, they don't have an election until November. So that gives a little bit more time, but given what you've also mentioned around campaigns, one of the things in this discussion where the twenty twenty-five, I brought that forward as a possibility because I feel like it's doable, doable. But I did ask Abby, so typically, when do you see people filing, right? And it is a lot closer to the election at the municipal level. Um, it is more exceptional to see, just as you, you mentioned. So I, I don't feel like that would interfere, um, if we were done with, by the second quarter. Um, with maps to you and the council, um, making their final decisions on district map. Including the council process.
It would have to be two readings, um, you would have to set the, um, the wards by ordinance.
So if we were done by like April, end of April, two meetings, then we can be done by June-ish, late May? Yeah, so with everything I think everyone else has here said too, and that, I think my, my choice would be sooner the better. I don't think it would take that long if we had that set up. And six months is more than enough time to get a really good community in, input process in place. And the other reason too is, people may file, so it's rare that people actually start campaigns fully, full, you know, early and fully. They may file early, but they don't really start till probably around July, is what I've seen. Um, most people, it's rare to get the early starters. So I think it's fine for one election to have that kind of janky right process where they may not know until late, it may be a little late, but the next time will be better. It's for the long term. You know, we're not thinking short term here, so I would say number two.
Okay, so some of you want sooner, some of you want a little time to have it all worked out, so now that's the issue. Which, which one do you want?
I think I'll go for two.
Two?
I think Counselor Demott made some good points around the excitement that this could drive around getting new folks and maybe different folks to run for the two-year, so that would drive me to move towards number one. Um, but I, I think I'll probably outvote it there, but, um, I can see the opportunity in that, so that's interesting.
I'm still for number one.
Just to clarify though, you were, you were for number two though, right?
Yeah, which, if I understand it right, it would be starting wards-
Number one is twenty twenty-seven, starting elections for, by ward. Number two is twenty twenty-five, number three is twenty twenty-nine.
Yeah, so we would do ward, our first group of wards in twenty twenty-five would be my preference.
Same, same to me.
So then they would, we wouldn't have to deal with two-year terms. We would get four years.
I've been through two-year terms. People are gonna fight it because of the four-year term, and they will, will want a ten-year term.
Yeah, I think you'll get, I think you'll get less, less good, good folks stepping up to do two years. So I, that's a part of, the other part of the reason I like the number two.
And then the third option that was proposed that I thought I heard some, um, people in favor of was to have another, the people in twenty twenty-five elected to four-year at-large terms and then roll out the first ward election in twenty twenty-seven and the full ward election in twenty twenty-nine.
We had one person-
Yes.
Say that, another one mention it, but I have the ones and twos. So it looks like the two gets it. I, I don't wanna look at two-year terms period.
Understood. So my understanding is the guidance from city council is that what you would like to see is those city councilors elected at large to four-year terms in twenty twenty-three shall serve their full term of office. In twenty twenty-five, one councillor shall be elected from each ward to serve a four-year term. In twenty twenty-seven, one councillor shall be elected from each ward to serve a four-year term, and no councillor shall be elected at large. Thereafter, all city councillors shall be elected to four-year terms with one councillor being elected from each ward every two years. Um, is that, do I understand my instructions correctly? Sir?
Only question I have is, I don't know how legal this is or, I don't know, you can stop people, but, um, if you have the off chance that somebody decides that they're gonna put in now, I think it would be fair for the clerk to let them know that this process is forthcoming and they could be applying for something that, you know, is gonna change.
I think we would have to, until the voters say yes or no on this and the, the vote is approved, that person would be putting in for an office that does not exist. Um, so I think at the very least we'd be putting our clerk in an impossible situation.
Well, but, I mean, yes and no, because i- if, if it fails and they're wanting to put in for the current system, I mean, technically, you know, they're putting in for something that exists. So I, I don't know if you could just at least let people know and point them to this just as information, like, hey, this is gonna be on the ballot. Like, I don't think you're stopping people, but I think that if, if you had somebody who wanted to put in for city council now, they could. Um, I think it'd be a fair thing to at least educate them that it could change if the voters approve this.
Oh, I see. Uh, you, you're talking about somebody who, who essentially puts in under the assumption that this is not going to pass and puts in for the currency. Yes, that's a, that's, I'm sorry, that is obviously, yes, you're right. That's a, that's something that would exist.
Just to, you know, I think it would be a good thing. And you probably won't get anybody, but just in case you do.
Well, I think the first go-around will be okay because they're gonna be from one of the wards, right? They'll be running against, in a ward, so I don't think it matters the first go-around. Cause it'll be one from each ward, so they'll be running in one of them.
It depends on informa-, I, I guess I'm not familiar off the top of my head with what, what they need to declare when they, they put in for this office, and-
You, you would. You'd have to say, I'm running for city councillor in ward, whatever, right? My form would have to-
But they don't know which ward, yeah.
Until the voters say that that ward exists-
Right.
Or doesn't exist.
But today it's just city council because we're all at large, so it would, it would change.
Okay, term limitations, number two. Remind me what you need there?
Uh, it's a decision about whether or not, um, the new position, should this pass, of, uh, wards representative city council member, is that the same office as a at-large city council member, or is it a fundamentally different and new office? The effect of that decision will be whether or not someone who has previously served as a at-large city council member, um, would, could, would or could be term limited for service as a ward city council member. Or whether it is wiping the slate clean, it is a fundamentally new office, and a person could, uh, would not face any term limitations based on their prior service in the different office of at-large council. Did, did that make sense?
Somewhat.
Okay.
Yep.
Um, so my question on this is, because we, we have term limits today. Our term limits aren't indefinite though. I've never really read into this, and I think I maybe even asked uh, one of, somebody in the city attorney's office. I don't know that I actually got an answer. So in today's environment, you can term out and then you can come back after some time. I don't know if it's an election cycle or if it is a four-year. Is it four-year? So, um, to me, I think that we should match that because I think that that has worked fine. Um, and my, my, uh, my thought in that is, I'm gonna be the first person who's on track to have an eight-year, two-term since Bob Briggs finished his two terms. Um, so I, I think that the, the residents certainly have in the past had times where they let people come back and run again. Um, and then, you know, but they've equally not reelected folks to office, actually pretty substantially kinda been the running in the last couple of election cycles. So I'd like to match that same thing. So to, to me, say, for example, myself, I'm gonna term out as a councilperson in twenty-three. Um, I don't think that, you know, in that next election cycle that I, you know, should be able to run for that. I think I should have to wait four years. But, um, and the other reason I think that's important is, as you go into wards, you potentially might, and the mayor mentioned this in some of our, uh, sister municipalities, that you might not have people willing to step up. And so I, I could, uh, foresee in the future where if a ward doesn't have a stellar candidate stepping up, that, you know, the residents could try to encourage somebody who's been on council before to run. So, um, you know, and that would be consistent with the way things are today. And I haven't heard a lot of feedback about that being, uh, an issue.
So the, um, current term limit that you're discussing is, comes into effect from Colorado Constitution article, it was at eighteen, section eleven, uh, that nobody shall serve more than two consecutive terms in office except with respect to terms of office that are two years in shorter in duration. And, uh, that it's not considered consecutive unless, if they are four years apart. So we don't need to do anything to make that apply. That applies based on the Colorado Constitution. So no matter what, um, that's going to be the framework for the wards councillors going forward. If we wanted, the, the issue is whether or not we consider it to be the same office or not. It sounds like you are in favor of considering it the same office.
I, I think, I think it is. I mean, to, to me, um, you know, that's what the, the folks are used to in Westminster. And so, you know, I've been on nearly eight years. I think it makes sense to stay consistent with that and, you know, not allow somebody to turn around and, and run for a ward because we changed the system. Um, I don't think that was the intent, what we wanted to do. The other thing that, just since we're on it, I am in favor of the, the same residency, um, period because that was a question you had in there too. I think that the one year in a ward is consistent. And I also think it makes sense to make them vacate if they moved to a different, out, outside of their ward.
How about the population? You have that one?
No, let's do that one separately, we're not mixing things up. Um, who wants to chime in on, uh, this term limitations?
So I agree with Counselor Demott for different reasons. So in terms of the, we're talking about the term limits, right? Not the residency, yes?
Yes, sir.
Well, for, for the term limits piece, I think that, um, the whole purpose of wards in general is to bring more representation, right? I actually don't like our current system. Many municipalities have formed their own term limit codes that basically limit and restrict. So the four-year, cause the state, the state gives each municipality the option to do their own thing, and many have done their own thing.
That is correct, yes, sir.
And we haven't, so we've kept what the state has. Um, I think the whole purpose here is to try and bring fresh blood. And I don't think the reason why people are not running is because of a lack of care or want. I think it's because we have a, we have one ward right now, and it's super expensive. And it's a hundred and sixteen thousand people, and it's really hard to do it. Um, we're, we're going to have a ward system which will make it much more equitable to run. So I, I wouldn't wanna draft policy based off of risk of people not participating, right? I think we should draft it based off of what we want long-term the city should look like and should be and should, you know, and represent. So I actually, I'm in favor of actually changing the term limits where it's restricted, but that's not our topic right now. But in that, in those terms, I would want to, at minimum, we should match what we have. We shouldn't make it even more flexible. Uh, so that's why I would agree to match.
Counselor Hutt?
Yeah, I think it's, should be considered the same office.
Counselor Carmilio?
I agree. I think it is the same office.
Okay, Counselor Ireland?
Same.
Mayor Protem?
Same.
Me too. So that one's done. Um, residency real quick. Yes, no, one year?
One year, can't vacate.
Yes.
You've got that, and then three. Do you want five percent, ten percent, or something else?
Um, I'm gonna advocate for ten percent. I would like us, it'd be nice maybe if we could include language for aiming for five percent, but I can understand that's, that can't be done. Um, but again, this is a major charter change. And to their point earlier, I think that because this happens, you know, once every, hopefully less than a decade or so, um, we need to provide fluidity where it's necessary. I also think it brings up another question I had at the very beginning of this discussion though, that I think should be addressed, which is how are we updating the wards and how regularly, and will that be part of the ballot question? You know, are, is the city gonna be providing a system every five years to, you know, get our population reset? Or what does that piece look like?
As I have, uh, currently written it, it is to be done essentially every ten years based on information from the, uh, national census. Let me find my exact language in here. Uh, yes. Um, based on the most recent national census data, wards will be reestablished by ordinance of the city council within two years of the publishing of the final results of each national census. I picked that two years completely out of a hat, um, based on no authority, so that could be changed. However, city council feels, I just figured the city council would want a little bit of time to make sure they have the- Um, however city council feels, I just figured the city council would want a little bit of time to make sure they have the adjustments. The national census data is something, using that is something I would recommend, let me know if you disagree. But that way you are, it's the best data available, um, it's not a projection, it's, it's. The best we can do for figuring out who actually lives where at that moment in time. It's not to say you couldn't do redistricting more, or sorry, um, draw the wards boundaries more frequently than that based on other data. But um, the more frequently you do it, the further away you get from that uh census data. The swishier it all gets, from my perspective.
Yeah, it just for context, that governance matrix, your peers, that I shared with you. Um, they don't, they don't do it, uh, you you can do it more frequently. The language that I most typically see, every ten years, and there is a two-year turnaround uh on some, for some municipalities. Um, and uh, and no more than, no more frequently than four or five years. In other words, it sends, sets a limiter on how frequently you can do. Um, there are a few that say we'll do it every five years. What you can do, um, maybe, not necessarily in the question, or or, you know, in some other. Um, capac- ordinance capacity, um, that's a little bit more flexible. They do do population, they do do data updates every other year, um, every five years at a minimum. And so there can be an evaluation, for example, of the population, if you're in a high-growth period, to see whether or not there needs to be a rebalancing of the wards. Um, so you can, you can do that and take a look at that, that's a function of the city clerk's office, to just maintain that evaluation and bring forward something.
And I think, another mention, I do think, I think I saw that two years in probably some other cities.
And you could say, um, you know, as long as the law, language doesn't say no, no more frequently than every ten years as the limiter. I think there's flexibility there, I guess is the way I'm trying to trying to put it. But some do prescribe it in their charter.
My recommendation is for ten percent to allow the charter itself the flexibility it needs, and then for the city to update every five years. Um, you know, every ten years, obviously, on the national census data, and then every five years, I think that'll help keep us pretty tight.
Purtem?
Um, I would say the ten-year thing for me works okay with the census. Because we do have some areas that are growing. Um, I think of the two major. Points of growth would be uplands and possibly the downtown area, in terms of where we might have capacity, see a couple thousand people. Enter into a certain area, but those are going to take about, you know, ten years to build out, if not a little bit more. So I feel like there's a little bit of space with those, and I also agree with the ten percent because of that very reason. Um, in addition to the points that Pam, point, um, Pam made regarding having some flexibility around certain neighborhoods.
Just, uh, would you be open to an amid, a five-year evaluation, because what you often see in municipalities is not any significant change? Right, and I were, in other words, there's no statistically significant deviations from the original assessment. And so the clerk's office comes forward with, we did this evaluation, and we are saying there's, there's no. Statistical reason to create any changes at this time.
So something on the order of must be, the wards must be reevaluated every ten years and may be reevaluated every five years?
Yeah.
That makes sense to me.
Yeah, that's, it's a little bit less restricted language.
Mm-hmm. Counselor Hutt?
Um, yeah, I'm for um five percent, and I'm good with what was just described, on ten years, and it needed five.
Counselor Zadi?
So I I'm four to ten, but the question I have is. If, so, I assume when the committee, the commission meets, if we reinstitute them and they meet and they decide on the, on the design, on the lines. That that would be based off of the criteria, right, that list of very strict principles. Uh, well, I want to avoid is future, future councils changing the line, gerrymandering, basically. So, is there a way of limiting any potential, future potential of gerrymandering? Because this assumes just population would be the criteria, but there's other things that we would be considering.
The language around contiguity and compactness are the principles that you, that you follow. Um, the, the real, um, and I will, I will leave you to say, the real muscle behind it, though, is litigation. Right, if there's, if there's some that feel that it's been gerrymandered inappropriately in some way, and those legal principles. Would s- would apply in that process as well.
So the way we have it written right now, or the way I I expect the draft to be, is essentially that, um, when you're calculating the wards. Each ward has to be uh contiguous, so no disconnected portions of a ward stuck off somewhere. And must be as compact as possible. That is language that you see in every description of every ward, every district, anywhere, and at any level of government. And yet still, you will find these strange shapes, because of course, the city itself is somewhat of a strange shape, including some unincorporated areas. That are enclaves themselves inside of the city. So, like she said, it, certainly, we do our best, and we have a much better chance of being left alone. Um, here at the municipal level, without quite as much um partisan input. But litigation is really the only final bulwark against it. At the end of the day. Um, sometimes there's, there's really just no way for us to draft language specific enough. That can still not divide important communities of interest. The more specific we get with how these have to be drawn. The less flexibility there is to actually move these around to incorporate the proper communities, so.
And part of that process is, is documenting this process very well, so we're documenting this process as we go along to say. These are the things the committee considered, we will retain all of that information, to say this was a thoughtful process based on these principles.
Thank you for that. Um, and the last thing I'll say is related to the census, I agree that that is the best kind of link. Or anchor to use, right, cause it's the most amount of data we could get. The only issue there is, you have low propensity citizens who don't, who are typically, who don't typically fill out the census. So, particularly, so people of color, low income, elderly, disabled. We, if you look at census participation, it's very, very low, so there's a huge risk of using something that is not really representative of, right? So, if we can just keep that in mind when we draft all this, that it shouldn't be the end-all, be-all, because there are significant gaps there. If that makes any sense.
Counselor Ireland?
I think.
Go ahead.
Uh, just I'd like to point out, I could, so the current draft that's before council for consideration has. Uh, a provision that says wards shall be set in accordance with all local, state, and federal laws, including the Federal Voting Rights Act. So I think that is also intended to guide the process of how the districts, the ward lines are drawn. Cause you wanna take all of those authorities into consideration, and so I think to the fear of, you know, gerrymandering, obviously. Would be in con- it would be in conflict with those legal principles. And so I think, you know, having that in the charter is intended to provide some guidance as to how the lines get drawn. Fair to say?
Y- yes, as as best we could, and also, i- if there is. A fundamental problem with the census data, which certainly is possible. Uh, that would be something somebody could bring up in litigation, or could end up providing the basis for some sort of civil rights, um, claim, or sorry, voting rights claim. Or civil rights claim, um, that could be used, that could be taken into account. At the end of the day, like I said, it's that, that final bulwark of litigation that will ensure um the rights of the voters.
Okay, thanks.
Counselor Ireland?
I'm for the five percent. I think it's the best practice, and. Um, I'm siding with the census, but we feel like if we're growing or shrinking a lot, five years would. But you're, the wording you used is fine with me.
Counselor Demoppa? He's the master of both.
I just throw out ideas.
I actually, um, I'm for the ten percent, just because I. I don't want us to get into a situation where five percent is too narrow, and that being a charter thing, I guess that's my big concern. So, um, I would want the ten percent, and I'm fine with the ten years, but a five-year uh overview, the way that it was phrased, it's fine with me.
I'm with tens, you've got five, ten, two fives, and people are okay with everything else that you talked about. What else do you need from us?
Just to be, um, so the guidance I have is to make it so, uh, the wards shall not deviate from one another by uh any more than ten percent. And that the wards shall be reevaluated, or shall be redrawn every ten years, and may be redrawn every five years at the discretion of the city council. I have my guidance. Uh, what else did we have? I apologize. I believe, uh, uh, there's the matter of residency requirement. Seems like everybody was on board.
We already said yes to that. Yeah, we said yes to that.
All right, um, in both elements of it, that if you vacate the ward, you're out.
Counselor Azadi, is that a question?
Uh, there is the draft ballot language itself. Do you, can we give you some, is that, this will be the time to give you that, right?
Well, absolutely, yes, sir.
So, reading that, it's, it's complicated, it's not clear. Um, I get it, but. You know, we've had issues in the past of legal, legalese in there that confuses people. I wrote a draft, I don't know if anyone else had an issue with the language itself, but the question is very confusing when I read it. From a residence. So, I have a draft, and the folks here can give their input if it makes sense. I could read out loud.
I'm gonna try to um type it while you do so, sir, so that I can um get my notes correct.
Okay, so. Shall the Westminster City Charter be amended to create three geographic wards? Each represented by two city councillors, elected in staggered four-year terms, and establish rules. For their election service and recall? I don't know what you guys think about that.
Depends on what the lawyers say.
So, a- all of the references, city attorney, to like the where, you know, the numbers in the charter chapters and all, and all of that? If we need to have that in there, I think you could put that at the bottom, right, and say, this refers to blah, 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 blah. But to build it in and start with that, I think will confuse people when they read all those numbers.
So changing the order of the question, so that the charter sites appear at the end.
That would be what I think would be clearer and cleaner.
I believe we need to have the specific sites in there. I'm not aware of anything that would restrict, that would, as to where we put them. Off the top of my head, I'm not aware of anything.
Yeah, me either.
That would restrict us.
specifics, but that's it.
Yeah, we could put it, I think we could put, I think we have to have it in there, right, you could, we could do something to the order of. Um, and I apologize, I I tried to type along, I didn't, I didn't get it all. But um, shall we implement this by amending sections three point two, three point three, three point one eight, five point one?
Counselor Hutt?
Um, I appreciate the effort, cause there certainly was confusion the first time that we had a ballot question. Um, but I feel like if you start referencing things, you're less likely to have people understand it. Um, so what I, and I know that we can't um necessarily advocate, but I am curious around how we educate people. To what this really means and in a, in common folk language, because I, you know. I think that that's something that we should be doing, so that, you know, we're not saying this is what you should do, we're just saying this is what it means. And, you know, having some sort of education piece maybe on our website that says, this is what it looks like if this passes. Um, I think that that's fair to, and I think it gets to what, what I think you're after. Um, certainly what I am after, I'd like to. What they're voting on.
Are you saying keep the language, the?
I I'm fine with the lawyer's language, because I I just know that it's difficult, and I think that. If you start trying to say, refer to this, refer to that, I think you're gonna confuse people. And then you're gonna send them fishing for the, for the information, so I'm I'm fine with it the way it is, but I do, um. But to the point, it's a good time to bring up, you know, we need to educate folks on what they're voting on.
Counselor Zadi, would you be willing to, to let me see what you've written, and then I can. Thank you, sir.
And if it helps, I could like read what it says today, and how confusing it is. So it says, shall the Westminster City Charter, comma, sections three point two, three point three, three point one eight, five point one, and five point two. Be amended and section eighteen point nine be added in order to provide for the election. Of city councillors by geographic ward, by dividing the city of Westminster into three wards. Each ward to be represented by, and the key, it goes on and on, with the.
Read it.
I don't know.
I think the first, the end part should be first, and the other part should be last.
Switch it, I don't think that's a big change.
By amending these sections.
I think it, it makes it a lot clearer.
Yeah, I think.
What we're getting at's first.
So long as the citations are the.
The citations are the afterwards.
I think we can flip the order of the questions. I think it's a good suggestion.
Yeah.
It probably will be easier to understand, but I, I just asked that we keep the references at the end. So that people understand that this question would amend the charter in multiple sections, and add a new section that doesn't currently exist.
We have four presentations to go. Does anybody have anything else?
So, um. I apologize. I'm trying to get you uh something right here.
To the chicken scratch?
No, no, your handwriting is, if I'd written it, it would have been taller. I'm trying to uh incorporate this without using the word amending too many times. Uh, what the heck, let's just do it. Um, so what I have uh is, shall the city, shall the Westminster City Charter be amended to create three? Three geographic wards, each represented by two city councillors, elected in staggered four-year terms. And establish rules for their election, service, and recall by amending sections three point two, three point three, three point one eight, five point one, and five point two. I do wonder, um, this may not be a legal crime, but if it wouldn't be a good idea, given your desire for clarity, to say, um. To, to state when these wards should be implemented. Uh, what year, in which election you want this to take place.
Right. Do you have to say the deviation, ten percent anywhere?
Well, I mean, that's the, there is, the, the problem I had in drafting this is, there are a lot of details in this.
Can you say to be into, fully implemented no later than, and do that out that last year for the full council?
Or we, we could, or that could be, that could be a step too far, and perhaps I should.
Do we have to? Is this required?
I don't know that, I don't think you, I don't know that you do, no. I don't think you do.
Uh, the previous ballot question was have a plan by twenty twenty-six. It did not specify any full implementation of the electoral process, so you have flexibility there.
I think that helps if it wins for people who wanna run now, when it's being implemented.
Uh, my, I'll just say my quick input is, to me, a plan, a plan is a, to have any plan, that means a timeline. And so I would say, I I like the idea of at least saying what you just suggested, to be implemented no later than maybe twenty twenty-nine. Even though we think it, or maybe twenty twenty-seven, though we think it'd be sooner.
The guidance I received was.
It'd be fully by twenty twenty-seven if we're, we go to the ballot for the first portion in twenty twenty-five. You swear in before the end of the year, right?
Yeah, just making sure.
We swear in December, so.
Shall the Westminster City Charter be amended to create three geographic wards, each represented by two city councillors, elected in staggered four-year terms. And establish rules for the election, for their election, service, and recall, to be fully implemented no later than twenty twenty-seven. By amending sections three point two, three point three, three point one eight, five point one, and five point two.
Anything else?
Oh, yes, thank you.
Sorry, may I ask, do you need fully implemented?
Does that not what I said?
You said implemented.
I wrote fully implemented, but thank you.
Anything else you need from us?
Uh, only to ask, and I know, um, were there any other things that, um. I missed, anything else that uh anybody wanted to see changed, or wanted to see differently, or had any thoughts on?
I see no hands.
So I have. So, I have, in twenty twenty five, I have the transition provision, I have everyone wanting, uh, year residence, I have new and improved actual ballot language. And I have redistricting to be, oh, uh, two years, uh, within two years of the census. Is that, um, is everybody okay with that, or? Okay, then with that, and I may have to come to you for help on how to phrase that, uh, optional every five years. I believe I have everything I need to bring an ordinance to you next Monday.
Thank you so much.
Great job.
I just, I'm gonna get round of applause. Thank you.
I can't believe we did all that in this amount of time.
I, 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 uh, it's what Dave pays me for.
Baby, hired a good one. That's awesome.
Thank you, man.
Yes, yes, sorry, I had to remember something tomorrow.
Okay, Mayor, um, thank you. Next up is, uh, item C, which is presentation of an overview of Front Range Passenger Rail and the Regional Transportation District Northwest Peak Hour Service Analysis. Chris Chauvin, uh, to lead, lead us off tonight in our presentation.
Okay, Chris. Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Protem, councilors, thank you for having me tonight. We're going to have a brief discussion about the Front Range Passenger Rail, which has obviously been in the news after the last legislative cycle. But we're also going to partner that with the discussion, excuse me, of the peak hour train that is being studied right now, uh, by RTD, basically a B-line continuation, moving away from the Westminster station up towards Longmont. So, I put some slides together for us today, just to kind of frame our discussion. And then when we get to this last slide, that's when we're going to open the, I need to get that floor opened up and kind of see where we as a city want to look at advocacy, support, not support, et cetera. So, as we get to that endpoint, I'll make that note. Just to put some facts on the table, just to get us started, uh, on the left-hand side is our commuter rail line that does serve the Westy Station, that's also known as the B-line. It is part of the FastTrax program that was passed by taxpayers in oh four. This service, the Peak Hour Rail Study, which I'll talk about in just a moment, will continue that B-line service all the way to Longmont, so essentially through Boulder up into Longmont, terminate, and then rotates back down, uh, to Denver. For the Peak Hour Train Movement, it's going to be three trains in the AM and three trains in the PM. And I'll talk a little bit more in depth about that shortly. For Front Range Passenger Rail, we're looking at a completely different vehicle. So, think, uh, the best option that I can always tell people when I'm talking about Front Range Passenger Rail is over the northeast corridor, say between Philadelphia and Boston, or New York and Washington DC, where you have these wide, uh, tracks, several different tracks, all being pulled by a locomotive and a passenger car on the back. The passenger car can be double-decker, it can be single-decker, but it does not look identical to what we see today on the B-line, or even the light rail that we see downtown. It's a completely different vehicle that is run by a railroad, essentially. Uh, this would be inner-city rail, that would basically serve many cities within our state, and, uh, would continue out into New Mexico and Wyoming eventually, as the plan is early, the early plans are showing us. The first phase of Front Range Passenger Rail would be Fort Collins to Denver. So, keep that in mind as we're going through our discussion and we get into, uh, the Front Range Passenger Rail. But as I said before, let's start out with Peak Hour, uh, the Peak Hour Study that RTD is working on now. That would be three AM trips in the morning, basically southbound to Denver, and three PM trips northbound to Longmont coming from Denver. It adds about thirty-five miles from the Westy Station, so remember, that service is still gonna be coming to Westy regardless. We're talking about north of the Westminster Station. It would include six new stations, including the one at downtown at Harlan and Eighty-Eighth, approximately that location. But it is using BNSF freight rail lines the entire way, so RTD is not buying right-of-way, like they do south of the Westy Station. RTD runs in its track, BNSF runs on its track. This would actually be joint, it would be operated on the BNSF Railroad, uh, right-of-way. The most recent outreach that RTD has done was back in February. There was a meeting in, in Longmont, and there was a meeting in Broomfield. Uh, the Longmont, it was fun, unfortunately, was a snow night, there was a pretty heavy snowstorm that blew through that night. I think they had maybe twenty people that showed up. Uh, Broomfield had many more, uh, had about a hundred people show up at that location. So, we definitely got a little bit more representation in the southern part of the quarter than we did in the north. The discussions with BNSF are wrapping up right now, and they're primarily focused on infrastructure upgrades. So, think about switches, think about siding tracks. Uh, siding tracks are where you put another track next to the existing track, so that the freight train or the passenger train can move over and allow the through train to continue on its way. I will let you know, based on, based on the study result, the draft study results that I've seen so far, is that there will be no siding tracks located in Westminster, uh, which is actually a good thing, because that requires right-of-way and could impact crossings and a variety of other things. So, the good news there is that Boulder County and Broomfield are gonna get the sightings. One of the sightings actually is gonna be about eighty-four hundred, uh, feet long. So, think of, that's a pretty distant, you think about a mile and a half train is gonna have to have somewhere to pull off to the side on that freight, uh, when a, when a freight movement coming through. The final report is due in October, and what we're being told right now is that the RTD staff wanna take it to their board first, before they formally release it and show. But some of the information that we've gotten so far, I have up here on the screen, mainly the financial information. What we're seeing right now is the impact, the cost could be anywhere between eight hundred million to one billion dollars, based on the current estimates. Now, all of this is subject to change to the final report, so again, when we see that, then we might be able, we might have to update these numbers. To put it into context for you, back in oh, in twenty eighteen, when this, uh, when the B-line was looked at to continue a, to continue on, uh, there were fifty-five trains during the day, instead of just six, they were looking at one and a half to one point eight billion dollars. So, you can see economy of scale, just in those short six years, we've seen the construction go up significantly. However, again, as I mentioned before, we don't know what the design looks like, we don't know the, the environmental impacts or construction, or when that would be open to service. We're still waiting for RTD staff to release that information. So, I'm in a wait-and-see mode, and so, we, as soon as we can get that information, we can push that out to both residents and the council, uh, as we go forward. But unfortunately, we just don't have it yet. How does that integration work with Front Range Passenger Rail? I hate to say it, unknown. We don't know, 'cause we don't have enough data from RTD to tell us what that's gonna look like. Timelines, schedules, uh, vehicles, all of that stuff is still up in the air. So, let's switch gears a little bit and talk about Front Range Passenger Rail. Uh, this is, most of you have probably heard this for a while. It came out of the Southwest Chief Study that was back in twenty ten, that looked at doing Front Range Passenger Rail. That was kind of like the early precursor to the discussions that we're having today, uh, connecting Wyoming to New Mexico. Uh, and so, basically, it would just run that track all the way down through the front range, connecting all of our jurisdictions together. There was a significant push forward in twenty-one with the passage of Senate Bill two thirty-eight, which put the Front Range Passenger Rail District that covered all or parts of thirteen counties along the front range, that would be a special taxing district that would go towards Front Range Passenger Rail. We'll get into that in just a moment. It does include both sides of Westminster, so both Jefferson County and Adams County Westminster would be included. So, we don't have to worry about one side or the other, it's the entire jurisdiction that would be part of this, potentially part of this district. Um, in the last session of the, of the, of the House, they, they passed, uh, HB ten twelve, which looked to kind of clean up a little bit of the operational efficiencies between some of the things that have been put out on Front Range Passenger Rail. It really didn't get into a lot of detail, it was more of a administrative changes. Uh, so, there wasn't much to really share there, 'cause we don't really know, again, what's gonna be happening moving forward. Now, this is where I think we need to dwell for just a second and talk just briefly about this before we continue to move on. The Service Development Plan, which is being led by the Colorado DOT, is underway right now. Uh, so, that is going to be looking at, what is the operation, how many vehicles per day, what's the ridership, what's the cost, what's the fare, all of that is being looked at right now, but it's all close to the vest. Nobody has seen any of this information, staff has not been alerted to what's going on. Our, even our advocacy agencies like Commuting Solutions, Smart Commute, and others, they have no idea what's going on. So, we're not getting any information from this study quite yet. The current concept coming out of Southwest Chief and the work that's been done since that time is showing that there will be no stops in Broomfield or Westminster. So, the train would stop, and then it also includes Boulder County, I need to add that as well. It would stop in the city of Boulder and then continue straight into Denver, and would not stop anywhere in between those two jurisdictions, both outbound and inbound. Now, it'll also stop in Longmont, and it would stop in Loveland, which, we can have a discussion about that offline, and then it connects to Fort Collins. So, you can see that the idea of Front Range Passenger Rail is. you can see that the idea of Front Range Passenger Rail is stop, distance, stop, distance, stop. And we'll get into that discussion in a minute just as well. As a reminder, there will be a ballot item that they're looking to put on the ballot for 2026 for that tax increase that we talked about in that district. It would only be in those 13 counties, though. It would not be a statewide initiative, it would only be in the district counties and the jurisdictions within. So just to put it out there, there is discussion happening between both of these groups. So RTD has been inviting Front Range Passenger Rail to all the meetings and vice versa. So each know both of what's going on, we just don't have that detail yet. Work will not preclude the operations of the other. So for example, if we were looking to have all services put on the BNSF track, now we're going to have a freight train, we'll have the commuter rail train, and we'll have the intercity train that will all be running on that BNSF track. So from a scheduling point of view, from storage and all sorts of other things, that's a lot of work that's going to have to be done if all three of those particular trains are running on that system. I will tell you that there is the discussion about the potential leveraging of the Fast Track Internal Savings Account, or FISA account. It's running, the estimates run anywhere between 110 and 130 million dollars that have been put into that account over the years. That would build out the Fast Track system, not just the B-line, but the entire system. So the last two stations on the Southwest Line, the loop line that goes up to the A train, the last two stations on the N line going into Thornton, all of that is part of this FISA account, all of which can't be funded today, because 130 million dollars is not going to fund barely even a stop, let alone a system like that. So there's been some discussions at the state level through the governor's office and others about leveraging that FISA money for federal money, coming in with IIJA money, which we heard about earlier with Amy and her discussions with some of the bills that were passed recently. So again, to be determined. Lots of to-be-determined in this presentation, and I apologize for that. So this is where I want to dwell, and I think I want to end our, in my part of the discussion here, because does Westy get a Front Range Passenger Rail station?
Yes.
Thank you. The answer as, based on the data that we have today is TBD, because we don't know what that final look is going to look like. RTD, yes. Front Range Passenger Rail, unknown, because we don't know if they can even share a station, because you have ADA requirements, you have electrification versus diesel requirements, you have track width requirements. So much has to go into where we do it. So do we have two stops now? Do we have one stop? Do we have no stop? To be determined. One of the things that we will be discussing as part of that overall discussion is station separation. I talked about it earlier, station, distance, station, distance, augmenting the local transit system. So if you're going to put a stop in, where is that stop, and how does it interface with the rest of your transit? So in our case, if it does stop in downtown, that's two bus routes, the 92 and the 100, we both serve that station. Then you can go use the tunnel and go over to Flatiron Flyer and pick up the 36 corridor. So we have opportunity here if the rail doesn't go in for, if it's just Front Range Passenger Rail. We have that opportunity that we can connect to all of these other transit facilities. What is the service impact? So remember, that train is coming from Boulder to Denver with no stops in between. What happens if we put a stop in there? What's the impact to the overall schedule coming down from Fort Collins or coming out of Denver going up to Fort Collins? And lastly, remember, it's a freight quarter. So what is the impact to freight? The current number that I've been hearing for BNSF is five to eight trains a day. And there was actually talk at one time that they were going to reduce even that, even go lower with that number. However, with all this discussion that's going on now, even five trains could be impactful if we're having 50 trains, for example, Front Range Passenger Rail and B-line all coming in. So now you're adding in another factor into that overall discussion. So that's where I'm going to dwell and stop my part of the discussion, and I want to open it up to hear what you have to say. As your representation out there at these meetings and having our discussions with our advocacy groups, I want to make sure that the messaging that I'm hearing from you is consistent with what I'm saying at these meetings. So that's why I'm here today to talk about it.
Yeah, Pro Tem.
Yes.
I knew your hand was up.
Oh, well, I was just gonna, can I add a little bit more too, just being on the Front Range Passenger Rail Board, just to, from what I've gleaned through that, the, the Board just recently adopted a resolution regarding the eight stations that would be part of this first phase of the passenger, I'm sorry, nine stations that would be part of the Northwest, sorry, Front Range Passenger Rail. And yes, that does not include, the primary stations, which they're called, does not include anything between Denver and Boulder. And there's a provision in that resolution that allows for second, identification of secondary stations. And it's pretty low bar to be able to identify yourself as a secondary station, but you would have to show there's ridership benefit, and it doesn't impact the service significantly. Knowing that, we also, I would say with respect to service impact, you know, the trains have to slow in this area, in the downtown Westminster area because of the aggregate crossing, and that's probably not gonna, we're not gonna have them do a flyover. That's not really going to change. So they already have to slow down, they might as well just stop. But the other, let's see, they, the SDP, the Service Development Plan that is being conducted right now is only looking at those nine stations and is, it would require an alteration to the scope and funding to change that scope in order to look at any other station opportunity. I think the Board would be open to working with the city to get some analysis underway to kind of show the case for, you know, any station in between Denver and Boulder. So in terms of ridership, economic development, I know we've already done a bit of that, you know, before COVID, so it would be something a little bit that we would need to do. The, right now, the way that they're looking at the BNSF share is that the Northwest Peak Rail Service would have a separate window or windows than the Front Range Passenger Rail. That's just how they're being studied and discussed with BNSF. Nothing right now is looking at how might they achieve some type of mixed service where, and I think there's an open, there's openness to a mixed service where the, the stations that have been promised with Northwest Passenger Rail could be integrated more as a, you know, you could have a limited service and then have a local service integrated in, kind of like we do, we have with the Flatiron Flyer. So I think there's openness to that, but nowhere is there a structure or funding to analyze that at this point. But in terms of getting people behind us, or even the Front Range Passenger Rail, you know, the, what else? The interoperability of the Northwest Peak Rail and the Front Range Passenger Rail, the Front Range Passenger Rail is definitely going to require a longer platform. So if we do ever, if we put any station in, if we want to have someday a station for Front Range Passenger Rail, going for the longer platform would be good, or at least planning or accommodating for that in our initial setup of the station. And...
If I could jump in to add to that point, your point about the crossing at 88th is valid, because if we have a southbound train, it cannot stop and block that crossing for more than, you know, 20 seconds at both. You can't load and unload in 20 seconds. So that's a valid point, that we might have to push that platform further to the east, you know, away from the 88th crossing in order to not get that crossing blocked. So that's a valid point to make as well.
So those are just some facts that come to the top of my mind with this. I know that we have had conversations, I mean, with, with respect to multiple transportation-oriented groups, that there's a desire for more service and interoperability or some type of shared service. But we definitely need to make that happen and find a way to make that happen, and some type of agreement to be had between RTD and Front Range Passenger Rail. I know that Adams County would like to see the downtown have a stop along Front Range Passenger Rail because of its access into the capability of access with the bus lines that you mentioned, going east into Adams County. They really see like that's kind of one of their only places, if not the only place, where they can access and get people to the Front Range Passenger Rail. And I've had Dr. Cog provide a lot of mapping that they've done for demographics and growth population and jobs between Denver and Boulder, which is a really strong case for the population that's overlooked and not served by the Front Range Passenger Rail on the North Metro side, whereas South Metro and kind of north of Boulder is served, I think, to a much higher degree for much smaller communities. So I think there's really good arguments to say, you know, you missed a spot, and, and there's some open, I, I think there are a lot of supporters to kind of, not only like our neighbors, but I think there's people who, who would listen. It's just finding the actual avenue to get this, the analysis done and to get the next steps done, and the political will and the funding to change the direction.
Quick question. Who's the final decision maker? Who actually, is it the Board? Is it a legislator? Would there be, like, to actually include Westminster? Who is the actual final?
The Board would have to change the stations and make the action for changing the SDP, because the, what's a little confusing behind, I, I believe that, you know, the Governor's Office is definitely passionate about this project, and CDOT's doing, they are actually conducting the SDP, but I believe that the Board would be the entity to update the SDP.
That's right.
So it sounds expensive. So do you know what this ballot measure is going to be in 2026? What are they going to ask the taxpayers to?
I have, what, I think I wrote it down. One moment, I think I have it here. I didn't put it on the slide. The ballot item is a sales tax increase of 0.8% within the district, like we talked about, generally I-25. All of them, all of Westminster would be impacted, and it could raise up to 500 million dollars is what the numbers I've seen so far.
So 0.8?
0.8, yes. So that, and that would be on top of the RTD tax that we already pay. So that would be a new, a new sales tax added to it.
Okay, I'm not a fan of that, because we're already talking about more sales tax for fire department.
Anybody else? Councilor Kernery?
Just to clarify, the Board you mentioned, we're talking about the RTD Board, right?
The Front Range Passenger Rail.
Front Range Passenger Rail Board.
Yeah.
What is our, well, okay, this brings me to a question I've been meaning to raise for some time and haven't, which is just quickly to the RTD Board. I believe that we're in District J. Do we ever have regular updates? I feel like we don't have any direct correspondence with them.
Mayors meet within once a month.
Okay.
Plus K.
I see. Okay.
And last month, Boulder-K. Have you seen it? Lynn Geising?
Okay. I was just hoping maybe we could get, invite them here if we had, but that's a little bit separate, but invite them here to get updates and be able to directly just talk to them.
So they make these decisions, they have nothing else to say than what Chris did?
And then the Front Range Passenger Rail Board, I know that you're on that, but it sounds like we don't have any, do we have like representatives, like, other than, okay, well, they've got you.
Well, so we have, there's a bunch of, I think that there's three of us from Dr. Cog, I could be wrong, maybe that's just you, but there's Longmont, Longmont's mayor, spacing the name of at the moment.
That's okay.
Yes, thank you, John. Deborah Mulvey from Douglas County. And I don't know if Randy Wheelock is on there through Dr. Cog or a different entity, but there's, so there's some city representation, there's unions, there's CDOT, RTD attends, and there's just, Denver has a few folks on there.
That's good to know. I think that's good for our residents to know too, who's making the decisions. And then just in general, the sales tax, I just, from my point of view, I mean, I don't understand why we would, why we would support something that hasn't benefited us yet and won't look like it will benefit us in the near future.
One thing, and yes, I, I think there's a lot of communities that would agree, that are being overlooked here. But the, and slightly on a tangent, I don't know, Mr. Sharan, if you are, how involved you are with some of the Front Range Passenger Rail planning, but I do, I did hear that the Westminster Station has been identified for a layover, like to store tracks?
Okay, yeah, the...
I mean, store trains, not trains.
Store trains, yeah.
Let me try that again.
So originally in FastTrax, I'm sorry, I didn't want to cut you off with your question.
Yeah, was that FastTrax or was that Front Range Passenger?
It was Front Range. If Front Range Passenger Rail talked about doing that, but they have not. I've not seen any evidence that that's going to help. We call it train dwelling. It's where they'll dwell during the day, because of, they'll be waiting at the ends of the line, so either in Denver or in Fort Collins. They're not going to dwell in the middle. With RTD trains, yes, there has been discussion. Remember, originally with FastTrax, we were going to get a maintenance facility in Westminster. It was going to be north of 72nd. That, that's not being talked about at all. It would be basically a storage area. It would have a driver relief section, like a little building for driver relief, break room, bathroom, that type of thing. But it would be just adjacent to the Westminster Station. So think about in the morning, when those three trains are getting ready to come back the other direction, they will dwell in Westminster. No maintenance facility, no cleaning facilities, nothing like that. It would be basically, for the lack of a better term, just a relief station, somewhere to park a train, and somewhere for the, the drivers to have to rest while they wait for that, for that transition time. So no MIG maintenance or anything like that.
Okay.
Originally with FastTrax, at but 112 and...
The banana person.
Yeah, that banana thing. We said we'd give that to them to use because Boulder didn't want them.
Correct, correct.
To be honest, if they could, if we could have the trains stored up there, I, I just think the, the place where they'd be storing the trains all day would be visually impactful to what we're trying to do to the Westminster Station area, and that it, this came up like five minutes ago. I mean, it came up very recently, so I don't think it's going anywhere. It's still an idea stuck in...
Yeah.
That, that is moving forward.
It's a dot on the map, it's a dot on the map at this point.
So I just think in terms of the visual impact to our park that we put a lot of money into, and having a train right there, I mean, and, and then keeping people away from it, and so what might need to happen in terms of fencing around, I just, I, I just think it can domino into...
Yeah.
Something that is impactful to what we've, you know, what we've accomplished there.
Yeah, yeah. Talking to RTD staff, I, I get where they're coming from by, by placing it where they are, because remember, right now, the RTD trains are electrified with the overhead wires. If we go forward with that Peak Hour Movement, they're going to have to move on to a line. You can't put those lines over the freight. So now we're talking about a hybrid vehicle, locomotive, or a diesel locomotive, or something's going to have to come, pick those cars up, and continue them on their northbound or their southbound trip. So I get that, because you have to store that locomotive somewhere while they would do that transition between the two types of fuel. And so I, I get where they're coming from, but given the fact that we still haven't seen a design or anything like that, we're always talking about concept, it kind of gets back to your point about Front Range Passenger Rail, there's still time for us to go, can we look a little further this direction, instead of focusing right there. It's all about what they feel like they can get the best bang for their buck in terms of transitioning that fuel type from a diesel to electrified or both, the other direction.
And the reason we always looked at the diesel piece is because the electric can't push the train up Mesa Davidson.
Right. I think diesel is the direction of Front Range Passenger.
Most likely, most likely. I always say mixed fuel, because there's new technologies that are always coming out with locomotives, but it's all going to be about topography, like you said, Mayor. Topography comes into play, how many cars are going to be pulling? I mean, it could be a number of things that could factor into it.
Anyone else? You can't forget, our people are paying for, these are two separate issues. And I hear sometimes conversation in RTD, if... And I hear sometimes conversation in RTD, if this one goes, our Fast Tracks goes, but we're still paying for-
Correct.
And so, and with this one, adding another point eight that they need our support on to get, to make it all work, um, and yet, when they put out, they put out those names like that, it didn't go through any process, I don't think, because your head spun around in circles when they said Loveland.
Mm-hmm.
And you have from Westminster to Boulder and there wasn't somebody that could match that number, I don't believe it, so, um, I have short patience with them, but it's, we need both, but we can't let go of Fast Tracks, that's what we're paying for. And nobody else should use that money.
I would be interested in seeing if, you know, there's some level of combination or utilization of our existing share of the Fast Tracks dollars for the, the tax that we've been paying, that if that could be added to, you know, some portion of that added to the point, you know, if, if Front Range Passenger Rail should go through, to, to supplement so that we could actually combine and get a combined service, I just feel like the combined service, it does, it doesn't make sense to me to like have separate windows on BNSF.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it doesn't make sense to have two different types of trains, so I think there's, and, and everybody kinda understands that Front Range, or the Northwest Peak Rail, as you mentioned, has no timeline. So if we're gonna be utilizing the, the money that we've been paying forever, and, you know, I, I think actually leveraging Front Range Passenger Rail and having that, some type of interop, interoperable station and service, even if we have some limited service going through on our local stations, I think that's better than what we would get, either nothing from one or some, you know, just one direction, um, for Northwest Peak Rail. So for me, I just wanna see a combined, um, service.
Yeah, they're serving totally different people. Counselor tomorrow?
Excuse me, to, my view of it is the, the folks in this northwest corridor need to be made whole, we've been paying for a very long time, so I'm not opposed to, necessarily to the new stuff, but if it's to replace what we've been paying for, for decades, like I don't think that's fair to the residents who've been paying for that, so, like, I'm, I'm all for us continuing to work hard to get, get our stations, cause I think we, we need them, we planned the downtown around it, um, but I, I just don't want that to get lost either, like, you know, there's been so many years, maybe some people don't even realize how long they've been paying for that and they haven't got their stations, so-
It's supposed to be built in twenty seventeen, we should have been using it for the last seven years.
So, so I think that needs to be part of the discussion, they, they do, they owe it to the residents who paid for that, to be ma, make them whole, in my mind.
Hey, Counselor, I can tell you, you know, earlier tonight, you heard from Amy and the lobbying that we've been doing at the state and federal level, and I can tell you, Northwest Mayor's Smart Commute and commuting solutions, all the groups that we belong to at the advocacy level, worked with our elected officials to get terms into some of these bills with Front Range Passenger Rail that said to not preclude beeline continuation, beeline completion. So we see the same thing that you're seeing, that all of you have been saying, basically, is that there's got to be some type of synergy that can happen between all of these services and still get it, the representation that we need out there, you know, to get the service out there to represent for our residents. Yeah.
Have we lost Walnut Creek Station totally?
Everything that I'm seeing, we're not gonna get a stop there. Everything that I'm seeing, you'll get one in Westy at eighty-eighth, you'll get one in Broomfield at a hundred and thirteenth, like somewhere in that, in that curve, right in that, where the old, what is it, Bank One Center?
Arista area.
Yeah, right in that area, then you go into Boulder County, like in the Boulder Junction, moving towards Boulder Junction, and then Boulder City. So that's the only one that I know about so far. Now again, that's all subject to change based on what that final study's-
As I said in the meeting where they, Broomfield wanted to switch, no, we asked them, do you wanna switch the Arista for Walnut Creek, they said no on the spot, and so, um, we've always had that.
Sure.
Which is why we've got, I don't know how many different apartment buildings built because they thought that was gonna be the train stop, but shops at Walnut Creek and, and there's an RTD station right there, um, it's used now for the homeless to park, um, so.
Yeah. Yeah. I, I, that's, that was, that's been the challenge, I won't, I won't lie to you, Mayor and Council, that's been the challenge with me putting these thoughts together, is that I just don't have quite enough information, because we're still waiting for these studies to complete, we're still waiting for these inputs from these boards, and I wanna give you as much information as I have, and I sorta, that's about what I have, I mean, Mayor Protem, you brought up some points that I didn't even know about, cause you're more privy to that at the board level. That's where we are, and so maybe we can have a further discussion once we start to see the SDP come out, once we see RTD's final study released, so say, maybe early spring time, you know, we can see another session like we're having right now, when we have all of that fact put into play, you know, but I'm hearing what you, we've taken notes and I've got what I need from you to go forward with, with opinion and, and thought, and as soon as I know something, we can elevate that and get it out to you.
The other thing they've never taken consideration was at the time, two hundred and fifty thousand visitors to the Butterfly Pavilion, all these buses coming in when, because of our, um, service on Thirty-Sixth there, they could have brought other transportation, but they would never do that, now it's over three hundred thousand, so, um, that's huge.
Yeah.
Loveland doesn't have that.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Can I ask that we at least start having conversations with Front Range Passenger Rail, um, I think at least at your and maybe, um, Mr. Andrews level, to just start trying to understand what kind of analysis might be helpful and, and to get some detail on the SDP and next steps once that's done, cause I, I don't like reacting, I like to be proactive.
Sure.
And I feel like everything that we end up having to do with transit, it happens to us, and I'd rather us say, here's what we want.
Yeah, okay, noted.
Anything else? Do you have a map?
I do. I'm good, thank you, thank you all, appreciate it.
Next?
Thank you, Chris. Mayor and Council, next up is item D, and that's presentation of the development review and entitlement process, and leading that is, uh, Planning Manager, Don McConnell.
Welcome. Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Protem, City Councilors. I'm here tonight to present you with an overview of the development review process. This is a request made by the City Council in conjunction with the April twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-four study session. Uh, at that study session, or-
Sorry.
At that study session, uh, staff presented a recommendation to the City Council to exempt concept plan reviews from the public notice requirements that are standard for public hearings. Uh, staff recommended that to the City Council because CPRs aren't public hearings, no decisions are made, um, no public comment is taken, it's done at a study session, and staff noted that public notice of the CPRs has caused some confusion in the public, sometimes resulting in citizens attending the study sessions and anticipating being able to comment. And on some cases, um, citizens, um, think that there's a final decision being made on a development when in fact, this is the very, very initial stages of a development process, it's the concept level. And so upon receipt of the April twenty-ninth presentation, the City Council expressed an interest in learning more about the overall development review process, uh, where the CPR process fits into the overall development review process, and when opportunities for public input are accommodated in that process. So the intent of this study session is to provide City Council with a presentation on the development review entitlement process, uh, the CPR and public participation and answer questions. Staff also seeks direction on the recommendation that was presented at the April twenty-ninth study session regarding the, uh, public notice requirements for CPRs. So the development review and entitlement process is highlighted on this slide, you can see the first three squares there with the highlight around them. Um, it accommodates the initial stages of the overall development process, it begins with the comprehensive plan, all development of property in Westminster requires mandatory compliance with the comprehensive plan. A PDP, our preliminary development plan, is required for all PUD zoning properties. A PDP serves as a unique zoning district for each PUD zoning property and provides the framework for site-specific development plans. A PDP includes basic zoning provisions such as building height, setback, conceptual access points and permitted uses. All PDPs are required to comply with the comprehensive plan. And then we go to the ODP, or official development plan, this is required to entitle a site-specific development. An ODP is a detailed development plan that includes, uh, items such as grading, utility location, landscaping, parking, building location and building architecture. All ODPs are required to comply with their associated PDPs as well as the comprehensive plan. So once an ODP is approved, the developer may proceed to the permit process, and that's the grayed-out boxes that you see here. Uh, these include land disturbance and engineering permits and building permits, once permits are issued, the site is constructed, inspected for compliance and a certificate of occupancy is granted once all inspections are completed and passed. So in recent years, the city has, uh, implemented some really major improvements to our development review sys, system. In twenty sixteen, Westminster implemented several key process improvements as a part of the broader implementation of the development review process improvements recommended in a city-initiated third-party audit of the Community Development Department, and that was completed in twenty fifteen. Among other things, the audit identified that developers found it difficult, time-consuming and costly to navigate the initial stages of a development review. Two critical process improvements were put in place in twenty sixteen. The first was an electronic plan review system, and the second was our pre, our current pre-application process. Prior to the audit, the city required all plans to be printed on large format sheets, submitted in multiple copies for each review cycle, and the move to electronic plan review was a real game changer, both for the applicant and the staff reviewing the plans, it created a lot of cost savings and efficiencies for both parties. The pre-application process was also very impactful. Prior to its implementation, the city employed an administrative concept review, and this process involved multiple rounds of semi-technical review, taking up to about ten weeks to complete. Um, in many cases, fatal issues that precluded a project's ability to, to advance were found at later stages in that concept review process, after much time and money had been expended by the applicant. The, uh, pre-application process, on the other hand, requires minimal application materials, and you've seen some of those in the CPR process, and it can be completed in three to four weeks. And, uh, for illustration, I did bring, uh, we, we pulled this out and dusted it off out of our archives, uh, this is what used to be, uh, called a concept review, concept plan, and this was what was required to be submitted to the city just at the concept level. And I, you know, won't go page by page, but as you can see, it's a very, very detailed set of plans, and so up to ten weeks' worth of review were replaced by a much simpler process that takes three to four weeks to get through. So in twenty eighteen, also, the city removed the service commitment competition from the growth management program. This process required residential developers to complete, or to compete for a limited number of water taps that were issued by the city on an annual basis. In years past, the number of residential units proposed, um, for development exceeded the number of taps that the City Council would issue every year, and so the competition was really robust and, uh, had a lot of competitors there with limited amount of resources to, uh, provide for those developments. But as we approached build-out over more recent years and started coordinating our water resource planning with our comprehensive plan, uh, that competition became not as necessary as it was in previous years. So the elimination of that allowed developers to enter the development review process at any time. The city managed its water and utility resources through our comprehensive planning, and we could assure those developers that if they complied with the comp plan, they had, uh, the ability to advance a development review. The development review process includes several steps, is illustrated in this slide. Uh, they begin with the pre-application review, they proceed to the CPR, concept plan review if required, then to new project submittal and project reviews, public hearings if required, and concludes with a final check, print, review and document recordation. Documents reviewed typically include PDPs and PDP amendments, ODPs and ODP amendments, and associated reports and studies. Step one is the pre-application review, this review provides a high-level look at a, at a concept and is intended to provide the applicant with information on the process, fees, any critical issues that, that, uh, may impact the plan, and from start to finish, as I mentioned earlier, the pre-application review process typically takes about three to four weeks. Currently, there's no fee associated with this review either, which is a cost savings to the applicant. And staff, uh, since twenty sixteen, has really received a great deal of positive feedback on that process improvement. The level of detail that our team provides an applicant for what, for the level of information they submit is, is incredible, and, uh, and they get a huge benefit out of that. So the new component to, to the process was our concept plan review. Uh, all PDPs, PDP amendments, ODPs and ODP amendments that require future City Council approval are required to complete this process after the pre-application review is completed and prior to the new, uh, project submittal stage and technical review. The addition of the CPR process typically adds a minimum of about six weeks to the applicant's timeline post-preapplication review, and since the adoption of the CPR process a little over a year ago, the city's completed fifteen CPRs. So steps two and three include the new project submittal and technical review, once the applicant completes the pre-application review and CPR process if required, they may choose to advance the project into technical review, if so, they're required to submit the PDP or ODP plan sets as required, along with the associated fees and studies per code. So these plans are reviewed by our cross-departmental staff, and these include staff members from community services, public works and utilities and various other internal and external departments. The review process is managed by staff from the planning division, and we coordinate all the internal and external reviews from the, uh, different agencies, and, uh, we manage the communication between the city and the applicant. The first technical review cycle takes four weeks to complete. At the end of the cycle, the project planner remits all of the collected staff comments to the applicant on the plan sets and the studies, and meets with the applicant as needed to provide feedback and answer their questions. The applicant then takes steps to review those comments, revise their plans and resubmit. Second, subsequent review cycles take about three weeks each. Many projects can complete the technical review process in about three review cycles, some take longer depending on a lot of variables. Once staff has confirmed that all aspects of the development plan are compliant with applicable standards and regulations, the technical review process is concluded, and the plans may advance to public hearings if required. So step four accommodates the public hearing process, development plans that are not administratively approved require the review and approval of the planning commission and/or the City Council, that, that requires the public hearing. So at the public hearing, each body is required to review the development plans in accordance with sections of Westminster Municipal Code, which provide approval criteria for plan unit developments, PDPs and amendments to PDPs and ODPs. Each public hearing includes a staff presentation, an applicant presentation and public comment. All public hearings require the same type of public notification as specified in eleven five thirteen of the Westminster Municipal Code, and this includes notice in the newspaper, signs posted on the property and mailed notice to residents in the vicinity. and this includes notice in the newspaper, signs posted on the property, and mailed notice to residents in the vicinity. Steps five and six accommodate the check-print review and document recordation. And once a plan is confirmed to be compliant with all applicable regulations and standards, is formatted properly, and is ready for final approval, staff performs one last review of the documents to ensure there are no errors and omissions. The concept plan review is shown on previous slide. This takes place after the completion of the pre-application review and prior to new project submittal and technical review. Concept plan review is required for all PDPs, PDP amendments, ODPs, and ODP amendments that require future city council approval. City council adopted this process in April of 2023 with the intent of providing the city council the opportunity to learn about projects at the earliest stages, and if desired, provide informal, non-binding feedback directly to the applicant. CPRs require the same public notice as public hearings for land use matters, including the signposting, the mailed notice, and the newspaper notice. However, as noted, CPRs don't include a public hearing or, or accommodate public comment. The following types of applications are required to complete the CPR, as noted earlier. The, that would include everything highlighted in yellow here. By the way, this is a list of everything that the council has approval authority over directly. And what's highlighted here in yellow is what requires the CPR. So, that's original PDP, certain PDP amendments, all ODPs for multifamily projects, all Uplands original ODPs, and really any ODP that the city manager decides to elevate to planning commission, the city council, according to code. So, there are opportunities for public input and involvement in the development review process. And this chart shows each step of the process along with points of public participation. The pre-application review and CPR don't facilitate public involvement. At these stages, a proj- a project idea is highly conceptual, and in most cases does not advance further in the development process. Currently, approximately thirty-five percent of pre-application reviews and approximately twenty-five percent of CPRs advance to that new project submittal. Public participation begins after a new project is submitted and under review by staff. After the first round of review, applicants are required to provide neighborhood notification through mailed notice and neighborhood meetings, where they present their project directly to the community and answer questions and receive the community's feedback. The neighborhood notification takes place at a point where a project is at a stage that demonstrates substantial compliance with city regulations, has the greatest potential to advance, and most importantly, when public input can provide a high value to the applicant in terms of making reasonable adjustments that accommodate the citizens' concerns. And so, after technical review is complete, if a project requires planning commission or city council approval, public comments also accommodated at the public hearing. Notices required for these meetings include signed postings, mailed notices, and newspaper notices. Comments are also accommodated through emails and phone calls at any time during the technical review. This concludes the presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. I would also like to request the city council's direction regarding staff's recommendation to modify the notification requirements to exempt the CPRs from the signed postings, mailed notices, and newspaper notices. This was discussed in a little more detail on the April twenty-ninth study session, which resulted in this study session. But I would like to revisit that and see if the council has any direction on that for staff. You know, if the, if the staff did, if the city council did decide to direct staff to, to produce an ordinance amendment that removed the notification process or modified it, we can prepare that and bring that back to you for consideration at a future public hearing. Keep in mind, CPRs will continue to be placed on study session agendas, just like all other study session agenda items, and they'll be continued to be posted on the city's website, just like all other study sessions.
Questions? Councilor Zadi?
How much did we spend in twenty-three on those notices for the CPRs we had last year?
I don't know that number. The applicant pays for the mailed notice. They create the mailings, they pay for the postage, and they pay for all the mailouts. They also pay for the signs to be produced and constructed and posted on the site. One example that was provided back on the April twenty-ninth study session, due to the size of the property, it was in the thousands of dollars to the applicant.
And we do have some costs, though?
We supply the newspaper notice. I don't have that cost with me today, though.
So, the bulk of this is on the applicant?
Bulk of this on the app.
So, changing this would be for their benefit?
Mm-hmm. It would, it would lessen the burden in the timing of the notification, considering that these notices are really designed for public hearings where the public's invited to participate, provide input, and on a decision that the council's making. The CPRs don't result in a decision being made. And so, so that's why staff's recommending to remove the, the notification process, just for CPRs.
And if I could add also to your question, Lindsay Kimball, Director of Community Services. It's also to benefit the residents, you know, in a way, because we have often found that they'll attend the CPRs and be very discontented that there's no opportunity for public comment. And there's been a lot of frustration, consternation as a result of, of that. So, we've, we've just experienced that. We've also had, I think, in my opinion, some undue consternation in terms of even the recent example, I don't know if you brought the flyer from the Zerger CPR. There were many, many folks almost filled up this room. As a result, some groups had sent out a flyer that said, "Tonight's your only night to make a difference. Tonight's your only opportunity to speak to council." And, you know, that's not true. We have many opportunities along the way. So, we need to balance somehow that expectation.
Without losing the transparency, too.
Yes.
So, I agree that it's pretty confusing.
Yeah.
If we're not really making any decisions, it's, what's the word maybe you use?
Gratuitous.
It's gratuitous. Gratuitous, so why confusing?
I say that in my sleep, yeah.
But maybe there's, maybe there's another way of notifying that doesn't look like it's a real thing. You know, maybe online or something. We say, "Hey, CPR." But I agree, I don't see the benefit here of keeping it. If it's not real, it's very confusing.
Senator Hutt?
Yeah, I would agree with that. So, I actually met with the gentleman, that's my neighborhood, and he told me he passed out five hundred flyers because he thought that we were making a decision. And with so few of these actually turning into a project, you said twenty-five to thirty-five percent, I, I would have to agree.
Yeah, same thought process. I'd say just due to the confusion that they cause, especially to our residents, but also, you know, if our goal is housing affordability, we are, if we're making the process longer or more complex than it needs to be, then we're causing costs to our developers, which they relate to their tenants or users down the road. And, you know, that's one more barrier that we could be removing. So, I, any efficiencies, I'm always for. Besides, our staff has the technical expertise to do a better job than I can.
Senator Allen?
I, for being transparent as possible, I would love how it is. And I would even like public comment. If they want to send me an email, a city council, I don't, I don't think I'm going to like this project. I'd rather have the public be able to comment at that level.
Senator DuMont?
Being here through the, the change of this, part of it was to try to get things in front of council, but also an opportunity for the public to share their opinion. I, it has caused some confusion, but it also has given, at least for me, I've got feedback from people before we came in and been able to ask questions that I wouldn't have thought of. So, I'd hate to lose the ability for folks to know that, you know, that, that bite at the apple is going to happen. But I don't know if there's, instead of doing away with it, I don't know what those notices look like. So, how direct are they that it's, it is what it is? You know, we, we read, or the mayor reads that in the front of the meeting, it's very direct, and this is what we're doing tonight. So, I guess it's just, with that being said, I am curious what those notices look like and if there's an opportunity to make the notice more suitable for what the hearing is opposed to getting rid of it. Because I do still think that it's a valuable opportunity for residents to see what potentially might come to them, be able to reach out to council people and say, "Hey, you know, here's my concern about it," and be able to get some of those addressed. And even with the Zerger situation or issue, there were a handful of us who were able to ask those questions of the residents. And I don't know about the rest of you, but I was thanked for having them addressed. So, I'd hate to lose that portion of it because I do think there's some value in it. And I think the other thing to the, the point of how many have or haven't went through, it is still a pretty new process, and some of these things, I mean, it is frustrating sometimes to be on council and see something. Like, I'll give you an example, Hunter Nathan Wattsworth, I've seen three things that were supposed to happen there. And I still have people asking me about the, the senior condos that were really excited about that and like not happening. So, I, I get it, and but, you know, that's kind of the way this goes. So, I don't know if there's some opportunity there because I, I do think there's some value. So, if there's an in-between of just getting rid of it, I would be in favor of that.
Your pro tip?
Living this daily, I would say, I feel like with residents, sometimes they either don't know when to come in, you know, when do they actually have a say? And sometimes with the timing, if something's already zoned, we don't have a lot of straight zoned areas, but, you know, with the PD, with the PDP, ODP, like, how far down the road is a project? And how committed is the developer to the configuration, the number of units, et cetera, where the residents don't have as much opportunity to really have an influence outside of like, kind of around the edges? So, I'm just wondering, and I don't think I have the exact, you know, answer here, but just to, at the concept level, if there's some additional way where we can gather community input, you know, at that nascent time where things are, ideas are still being formed. And it could be that maybe it's a modified notification, like, "Hey, come hear about this at, you know, this will be presented," or maybe there's a website or something that they could go check out instead, you know, or attend our council meeting where the concept plan is being presented, but that they actually have a way to provide, you know, go back and provide some input that gets heard before. So, I, I mean, I understand, I think having all the caveat and language, like, "Yeah, not a lot of these go through." You know, the council discussion is not the venue necessarily for this input, but here's an opportu- here's where you can provide it.
It's not, not a survey.
You know, how else do you, well, it may not be a survey, but it like, at least.
I agree with you, I'm just saying, I'm just making a joke.
To that point, you, to your point, I mean, this potentially could save developers money because, I mean, this is, I mean, it's being put out there. I mean, how many of these things maybe don't happen because they get blowback? Think that this early on in this kind of process, it's hard to say. I would say, though, there is actual evidence that we've seen where people were confused about what exactly they were coming to. However, there was still valuable feedback that residents were giving both to council and developers. And I mean, you know, ultimately, how far down the path do you want a developer to get before they realize, mm, this isn't, you know, isn't going to be well-received? And I think, unfortunately, you have a couple of classes of developers. You have ones that are very proactive and try to go out and talk to the community and get ahead of that stuff. And then you have ones that maybe, well, and you kind of get the gamut of developers, too. You have people who are newer that are doing some of these smaller infill that, you know, don't have that level of experience. So, I think we're, we're, there's some value add on both sides of the coin, kind of to your point, where, you know, you might be saving them some headache down the road to be able to get to your point, to get ahead of the process and, you know, before they're into an ODP and all the things where it's harder to kind of unwind it.
Sorry, I don't know if that was overly helpful, but. One more thought, just in general, I think I've asked about this on so many different topics, and we said that maybe someday next year, a website or a thing or a tool is coming that has like a chat box feature. Is that true for our city? Are we still working on that?
We are, thank you for the question. We are working on a, a new public engagement platform. I just met with our communications manager this morning to go through the status of that. So, we, we will be able to bring you back an update as to what it, what it can do, and it is to set up big, big-ticket item pages that our, our community can go to, get information, and then provide, either ask questions or provide input on that project or that issue. So, I'll be able to provide more detail for you once that timeline's moved a little further along in the pre-development stage. But it is, it is planned and it is in process. So, I'll be able to provide a more specific update, but it does exactly that.
That's exciting. I just lost count of how many different issues we've discussed where I thought, man, that would fix what we're handling with. I don't know if it's too early to plan or rely on that, but my thought immediately goes to, to your point, can the developer post this somewhere on a page? They leave it up for, I don't know how long, a week. The folks give their input, and that's collected and received at some level, and then we're, I don't know how we get that feedback. But I think that that eliminates so much cost for their side and for us and time. And so, that's where I see as a good solution. But of course, that's not implemented until a year from now or whenever that's life.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Yeah, I like that. I'm, I'm okay with modifying it with some of these things being said. We need to figure out a way that, because if you did it the way Claire says, then they'd bring, part of their presentation would be, well, here's what community sent in to us during this period of time. And we'd get that ahead of time and in the report for the agenda, and we'd know what people are saying. This is one of those areas where I think communications can help us. We've got, we said tonight, there's several areas, we need education. And I think, I don't know what communications focuses on, but educating so that people understand and know and can access the entire process, I think, is helpful. So, you've got four saying, "Agree to modify." You have two would like, the business is, and one that left us with lots of thoughts.
Well, I, I guess the consensus is that if, does council wish that staff brings back another alternative or two on the subject? I know you love seeing me so often, so I'm happy to do that.
And we don't see it could do us just sleep.
So, Mayor, we will take this feedback tonight. It's been very, very helpful, sorry, can I start?
I just want you to make sure that you think about seniors and those that don't go on the computer to your website. I think mailings are the best, at least for me. I actually go to the mail and read, read the things I get from you, the city.
I agree. I, I think out of the three components of the notification, the sign, the newspaper, and the mailed notice, the mailed notice probably has the most impact. It's directly notifying the most impacted people around the development a thousand-foot radius. The mailed notice also has the potential to add more information and clearer information. So, that could be a, a recommendation that we would.
I appreciate them, you being able to email their comments the night it is to me, from that mailing.
Hey, Mayor, Council, thank you very much. We'll take all this input. We will do some retooling, come back to you once we've done that retooling with some, with a, with a retooled option and possibly. uh, once we've done that retooling with some uh, with with a retooled option and possibly even an alternative uh, for you to give us um, uh, further and possibly final direction on. And before that, we will keep the process uh, in place. I do want to add, uh, fairly early on in the CPR process, we did modify the the mail out to, I think it's in bold and capital and underlined to say this is, there's no opportunity for input, but I think the impact uh, is a trick, the the notices are still triggering a public hearing uh, feeling for residents. And they're showing up and be being discontented for a lack of input. So that's exactly what we'll try to address with our with our alternative that we come back to you with. Um, and take your input and feedback into account. And we'll bring that back. They'll, I think staff will need some time to to work through that. We will look at the timeline on the software project and if it doesn't line up very well, we'll come in with a with an earlier fix.
Anything else you need from us?
No, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next one.
All right. Next item up tonight is item um, E, which is the presentation of the twenty twenty-three annual comprehensive financial report and auditor's report on the results of the twenty twenty-three annual financial statement audit. And Sherry Sanchez uh, is here. Uh, thank you, Sherry, um, with Larry Dorr and we'll uh, have uh, the team introduce our auditor uh, as well.
And Larry Dorr just got in from an airplane from Atlanta.
Yes, ma'am. He was a commission for fire department accreditation. International and I'll let Chief Burke announce the findings of that hearing this morning, but uh, thank you. I'm Larry Dorr, Deputy City Manager and CFO. And I just want to introduce uh, some staff here in a moment. But before I do, we are not presenting a PowerPoint to you, but whether we are presenting the annual comprehensive financial report to the community and to the mayor and city council. Uh, and also allowing the auditor to make her report. That's what we're doing here this evening. So now with some introductions, I want to introduce Mr. Gary Newcomb, accountant uh, in Westminster Finance Department. Uh, after nineteen years of service, Gary's announced his retirement effective next month and uh, here available if we need him for any uh, items. Gary, congratulations on your retirement. And with that, I'll turn it over to our accounting division manager, Sherry Sanchez, who oversees a team of accountants, specialists and technicians that count all of the revenues and expenses of the city, take care of our internal controls, manage our payroll and all things financial related. And next month, Sherry will mark twenty-nine years of service to Westminster and uh, both of them Westminster residents. So uh, we're in good hands with this uh, accounting team. So Sherry, would you uh, have a few comments and introduce our guest?
Sure, I will. Um, good evening. It's uh, good to be here with you this evening. Um, and we're going to talk all about the audit. Just to start off, section nine dot ten of the Westminster uh, charter requires an independent audit and an annual report that um, is in a is uh, done in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles and by certified public accountants experienced in municipal accounting selected by the city council. So the city council awarded a contract for independent financial auditing services in twenty twenty to B K D L L P. B K D has transformed to Forvis Mazars through a merger and an acquisition. And um, the original contract um, that stands uh, included the option to renew for four additional one-year terms, subject to annual appropriation. So the twenty twenty-three annual financial audit is the third of the um, uh, additional one-year terms. Um, I'm I'm pleased to inform the city council um, that the twenty twenty-three audit is complete and that Forvis Mazars has issued an unmodified or clean audit opinion on the city's twenty twenty-three annual financial report. Um, the annual financial report is posted to the city's website under financial reports on the transparency page. So the purpose of the audit is to provide users of financial statements with reasonable assurance that they can rel- rely upon the statements to make informed decisions. The audit is an assessment of the fair presentation of the financial statements. It is not an assessment of the city's policies, strategies or economic condition. The auditor obtains reasonable assurance as to the fair presentation through audit testing and the goal is for the financial statements to be free of material misstatements, otherwise errors or omissions that would have a significant impact on uh, users of the report in a way that could influence their decisions. So the ACFOR, the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, acronym ACFOR, is a result of a significant team effort. And I'd just like to read to you the team members' names who participated in in um, putting the ACFOR together in the annual financial audit. Business Operations Administrator Vicki Adams, Business Operations Analyst Yuki Wu, Accountants Don Cartier, Sherry Duran, Chris Martin, Gary Newcomb and Lori Stevens, Retirement Administrator Kim McDaniel, Senior Financial Analyst Chad Smith and Sherry Young, Former Senior Contracts and Grants Coordinator Mary Jockwish, Accounting Specialist Val Dennis and Finance Specialist Nina Vu. Additionally, Sales Techs Manager Diana Cervantes, Treasury Division Manager Bob Byerhoff and Deputy City Manager, Chief Financial Officer Larry Dorr also provided support. Uh, the city's financials are vast and complex. So in addition to the financial statements and the notes to the financial statements, I'd like to point you to the uh, letter of transmittal and management's discussion and analysis at the front of the document, um, which concentrate on the year's financial highlights and summary information. So a little bit about Forvis Mazars, they're ranked among the top ten public accounting firms in the country and will create a top ten global network in twenty twenty-four with the recent acquisition by Forvis of the U S unit of Mazars and an international audit, tax and advisory organization. Forvis Mazar- Mazars serves over six hundred city, county and state governmental clients nationwide. Their assistance and professional approach contributed to a thorough and smooth audit. Forvis Mazars Audit Director and Certified Public Accountant Carmen Jeffries led the city's twenty twenty-three annual financial audit and joins us tonight to present to you the results of the audit. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for having us here today um, to present to you our required communications um, to you all as we have completed the audit. Uh, Sherry stole a bunch of my thunder. So a lot of what I was planning to say, I will gloss over because she's already stated that. However, before I begin the actual presentation, I do have to give a huge thank you to Sherry and her team, all those people that she mentioned, plus anyone else that we talked to. Um, they were instrumental in providing uh, information, um, answering questions, uh, going through items of discussion throughout the audit, before the audit. So it was really a team effort. So I really have to give them huge kudos for that because without them, yes, we would audit, but it would be a lot more difficult. So we definitely want to appreciate them in that aspect. Okay, so I will get to our required communications. Um, the scope of our audit, um, as Sherry mentioned is to um, audit in accordance with uh, government, excuse me, in accordance with generally accepted uh, accounting standards in the United States of America. We have provided uh, financial statements that cover the period ended December thirty first, twenty twenty-three. And we conducted this audit in accordance with our contract, which was dated March twenty-sixth of twenty twenty-four. We are responsible for forming and expressing opinion on whether the financial statements that have been prepared by management with your oversight um, are prepared in accordance with accounting principles generally accepted in the U S. In addition, our audit is performed with auditing standards, um, with governmental auditing standards, excuse me, issued by the Comptroller General of the United States, which was called GAGAS. And our audit is designed to obtain reasonable, rather than absolute assurance about the financial statements. Therefore, we don't look at every transaction. There are too many to review. We look at a scope basis. So there may be things there that we don't see because that was not a part of our scope. But based on our scope, we do deem it to be materially, the financial statements to be materially correct. We are independent of you all and our audit does not relieve you of your responsibilities um, to ensure that things are operating effectively. In addition to that, um, we issue an internal control over financial reporting and compliance, um, opinion, uh, other matters based on audit of the financial statements performed in accordance with government auditing standards. Um, this is not designed to provide a report on the effectiveness of your internal controls. We do not do that. We do not opine on that, but we do review to ensure that those controls ensure that you are compliant with government auditing standards. Additionally, we um, perform a uh, audit over the uniform guidance. And based on that audit, we provided you with an opinion on the compliance for major federal award programs, the report on internal control over compliance and the schedule of expenditures of federal awards. There, that audit is also designed to obtain reasonable, rather than absolute assurance about whether non-compliance exists in your federal single audit programs. Therefore, we look at a scope. We don't review all of those transactions either. And based on that scope, we have deemed those to be materially correct. The audited financial statements are included with um, the annual comprehensive final financial report, which we classify as other information. So our finance, financials are included within the ACFOR. We review the ACFOR. We read it for consistency to make sure that um, everything that's noted in there that's discussed, that is financial related is actually um, supported by the numbers that are in the report. Additionally, we also um, review that report for um, mainly consistency and communication. So if there's something that is there that does not um, coincide with our financial statements, we'll have discussions with management. We'll talk through things to make sure that everything is um, consistent throughout the document. So, um, qualitative accounting aspects um, that I will discuss with you all. The significant accounting policies are noted in note one of the ACFOR. And in the current year, uh, the city adopted Gatsby ninety-six subscription-based information technology arrangements. We'll talk about that later, but we call it Sabidas because that's a lot to talk, it's a lot to say all at one time. There were no unusual accounting policies or methods. There were no alternative accounting treatments that were noted. Throughout our audit, we do look at management's judgments and estimates for reasonableness. And we have discussions with them. Within the report that we provided, there is a list of estimates that we deem to be significant. And we had discussions with management on how those estimates were created and noted those to be reasonable. We also um, look at any significant disclosures, which we deem um, which we feel like we need to review. And the significant disclosure in the current year related to the implementation of the new accounting standard, which was Gatsby ninety-six, um, the implementation of Sabidas. Um, adopting Gatsby ninety-six, the Sabidas, was a huge undertaking of the city. Um, if you remember last year, the city uh, adopted Gatsby eighty-seven, which had to do with leases. Ninety-six is the information technology lease, basically, is what it is. And so um, it was a lot of uh, information gathering that um, the team had to do in order for us to be able to assess what um, Sabidas actually exists at the city. And that information is stated now on the face of the financial statement, just like the leases are now on the face of the financial statements. They are um, so now they're incorporated with capital assets. So now it's capital, lease and subscription-based technology arrangements. And that all goes into one line item or in that same little bucket. Um, we are required to provide you all with any adjustments that um, were made, proposed and recorded or unrecorded. In the current year, there was one proposed and recorded adjustment that had to do with the implementation of the Sabidas. Um, that was a item that had to be pushed back to twenty twenty-two. And so there was a, an adjustment there to ensure that that information was presented correctly. And the city did make that adjustment. The uncorrected misstatements that are also included in your packet relate to accounts payable recorded in twenty-four related to twenty twenty-three. That is in accordance with city's policy. Um, there is a point in time at a dollar value in which they will not review um, those that come in. So if you have an uh, invoice that comes in in March and we're not done with the with the ACFOR, well, they may not review that one because it's very long and the risk of it not being included in twenty twenty-three is much lower. So we are comfortable with the policy and that is an entry that has occurred over the course of many years. We had no disagreements with management. Um, during the audit process, we did discuss ninety-sixes, I've stated. We also discussed the asset impairment for the Sheraton Green Elementary School building. So that was something that we discussed and had and made sure that that was reported correctly in the financial statements. Just as a side note there, when things are interesting that happen in the city, we try to have discussions about those before the audit actually occurs. So therefore, there's no reason for us to have, to hold anything up because we've done the research. We've talked to whoever we needed to talk to to ensure that that is easy to get through during the actual audit process. Um, we had no difficulties encountered during performing the audit. And then as far as material communications, within your packet, there is a management representation letter. In addition, there's also the um, listing of the adjustments. However, we also communicate to um, management, any oral um, items that we see, those would be items where we feel like we could offer assistance to help the city just become better. Uh, better controls, better processes. And so we have discussions with management over um, those and just note those during the audit. Nothing significant that um, is necessarily deemed to have to report to you all. Welcome to tell you what some of those were. Have no problem with that, but it's just not something that we deem to need to be written. Um, lastly, there are future accounting pronouncements that are coming up. In twenty twenty-four, um, next year, there are two um, statements that the city will have to adopt and that's Gatsby Statement one hundred, Accounting Changes and Error Corrections. Um, we don't anticipate, unless there's an error, we don't anticipate that to have a huge impact on the city at all, but it is a change in how that will be reported if were one, if one were to be found. However, Gatsby Statement number one oh one compensated absences, on the other hand, will potentially be somewhat of a lift because there is a change in the way that compensated absences will be reported going forward. So we have started having conversations with management about how that's going to look going forward and will continue to have those over the course of the year to ensure that is reported correctly. Gatsby Statement one oh two is also coming out and that's Certain Risk Disclosures. That will be implemented by the city in twenty twenty-five. And that standard is really just going through and defining the concentration and lack of diversity related to an aspect of significant inflows of resources or outflows of resources. Really just trying to make sure that everyone is disclosing the risk around investments, risk around any other types of those activities that occur and there is inconsistency among the um, governmental world. And so therefore, this standard is coming out to attempt to um, make things more consistent. Other than that, um, that is the gist of my presentation. I tried to be high level, seeing that she had given a lot of the information prior to, and I did not want to repeat. But I am wa- open and welcome to answer any questions that you may have.
Everybody mesmerized? Thank you and thank you for the lateness of the night. Sorry, we took forever, but um, thanks for hanging in with us.
No problem. I appreciate you having us.
How long was your process?
Our process starts in the middle of April and our goal is to be done by the end of May, early June. And so in the current year, I think we were middle of June. However, in that same process, we have uh, conferences that we both attend. So there are things that happen in there that change the timeline. But for the most part, it's about two months, two and a half months.
Uh, two months, sixteen people?
I think your team's about four or five hundred hours.
Something like that.
Amazing.
Something like that.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
No problem. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Have a nice evening.
Thanks, Carmen. Thanks, Sherry.
Okay, five minutes. I'm going to watch the clock. Okay, five minutes. I'm going to watch the clock.
Our final presentation of the evening is going to be led by Paul Knippel, our Public Works and Utilities Director. And he'll be presenting on the city's roadway improvement fee, stormwater utility fee, and sewer rates. And this is a higher-level presentation, not highly specific. And really, it's to present to you the current thinking so that we can take your input and build that into the budget. And this is just the right time to do that. And so three very different but related issues that will be presented. And Paul, I could turn it over to you tonight.
Thank you, Jody. That's perfect. Yes, this presentation bundles three infrastructure-related items that may impact the preparation of the twenty-twenty-five budget. The first item has to do with pavement maintenance. Just a little bit of an overview. The condition of the city's asphalt pavement is measured annually. We measure one-third of the city, so we get through the entire city every three years. The current score is, that's by industry standard and practice, is fifty-seven out of a hundred, which is a fair or an acceptable condition. The, we have a pavement condition model that predicts that if the current funding levels for asphalt maintenance are not increased, the condition, the condition of the city's pavement will not stay the same. Rather, it will continue to degrade to an unacceptable condition. And really, that speaks to a compounding effect that has when you hold funding levels flat for some of this infrastructure. One is that we wouldn't be keeping up with inflation, so you lose buying power year over year. And secondly, particularly pavement continues to degrade over time. It just doesn't get better and stays sad. So you have those two things working against you when you stay flat. And then the same model that we have for this predicts that we would need approximately sixteen million dollars annually for asphalt maintenance as opposed to the eight-point-six that we funded in twenty-twenty-four, just to keep things flat. That's a model. So I wouldn't, I think it's a data point and it's an indication. So how do we close this gap? And so we started here with the assumption that, that there would be no increases in outside state or county funding, which there probably will be some, but we're just going to assume that for the next several years, that's going to stay the same. And we also are going off of the assumption that there is no further contribution from the general fund. So that just leads us then to the roadway improvement fee. And so just a little bit of a background of the roadway improvement fee. It was established in two thousand and seven at three dollars per year per water meter account. So a resident is paying the same as a big box is paying the same as a smaller retail. If you have a water meter account, it was, it was three dollars per account per month. And then it's changed over time. And in two thousand and twenty-two, we capture and began to view all the multifamily as individual, single-family residences as well. So there was a little bit of a bump in twenty-two as a result. So we've got three general options here. As Jody indicated, it sort of leads to the thinking, these aren't necessarily fixed options. It sort of represents a direction where we could go. And one is option, the first option is just to do nothing. And we've already described that that would not be the recommended, recommended direction. The second option would be to, to begin to draw a distinction between residential and non-residential. So it's a, it's a step, a step in the direction of establishing a little bit more equity in terms of the impact of the land use on the roadway. Because non-residential has a higher impact on the roadway network than does just single-family households. And then it also would, would increase the level of investment that we have for this. So option two would, just the first thought would be increase the residential component by one dollar per month to seven dollars and then establish a non-residential flat fee of twenty dollars per month per account. This, this would generate somewhere in the order of an additional eight-hundred thousand dollars of, of investment that we could put into the streets. It doesn't begin to, we would bump up to roughly nine-point-four, nine-point-five million dollars. So it's an incremental gain. It's something, it's understandable. And it does begin to, again, draw that, that distinction between residential and non-residential. The, the third option is, would be to continue with the, what we established in option two, having a residential and a non-residential component. But then began to, on the non-residential side, add in a dollar amount per square foot of building space. So that then begins to reflect a larger business or commercial enterprise is going to have more of an impact on the roadway than something smaller. So you would have a larger variation there on the non-residential side. And we would predict that we would generate a little bit more money doing that sort of thing. These numbers could be, could be adjusted. The dollar amount per residential could be adjusted. The amount per, per square foot of non-residential could be adjusted. So there's, there's maneuver room in there. This, this is preferred direction to go. It's not recommended right now. We're not ready for this. We haven't done the homework that we need to do on this. What I'd like to do is have the time to, to do a dry run of it and, and apply it and see what happens across the city on a parcel-by-parcel basis. So we can understand what the impacts are. There would be some huge differences from six dollars a month to hundreds of dollars a month for some businesses. So we would want to see where that shows up and, and maybe think about some caps or adjusting the dollar amount. And then also working it through, through the, through the public as well. Do, do some, do some outreach and then also come back to the council. And then potentially bring something back to you well before the next budget cycle so that we have worked this through. And, and maybe nothing would come out of it, but we would like the opportunity to begin to dial that in. Because as time goes, we can then make further incremental adjustments on, in a system, in a rate structure that is, is more accurately reflects the impact that, that various parcels are having on the roadway network, if that makes sense. And so just overall statements about the impacts on, on the roadway condition. You know, the, the pavement index is really somewhat of a performance measure. Again, we do it every year. We watch it closely. This isn't something that, this is more of a creep kind of situation as opposed to a catastrophic situation. So I think that by making small incremental adjustments more frequently and watching the pavement index, we can begin to see are we having an impact. And of course, our staff does a great job of, of making good decisions about where to put the money that we do have available and, and in what manner so that we can get that score up. So we, we, I think we can get some efficiencies and some other things. So it just, it just makes sense to have a smaller amount and really watch the, watch the performance of the pavement as we go along. So that's, that's streets and pavement.
Before we start mixing everything up?
Yes.
Do you want to do one at a time?
Yes, that's fine.
Let's go back to our three choices. There we go. Yep, Councilor Zadi.
We not know the answer to this. Is Lindsay Kimball still, she's not here anymore, right?
No.
But my, my, what I would like to know is if you look at the total number of businesses we have, take the average of the square, what's the average square feet of, of all of them? I would imagine we have a lot more small businesses than large logically. And I, I would not be in favor of option two because that would say all small businesses. You, you guys are equivalent to these larger folks who are actually doing the most damage here. I think to your point though, Director, you want to start with two kind of as a test run. But I think you should test one, three, because telling a small business to go from three dollars today to twenty dollars for a period of time, when they may not even have any impact on our roads relative to, you know, a King Supers, that is definitely impacting the road much, you know, because we saw the square foot. I love the idea of doing it a dollar per square foot because then that makes it more equitable for all small businesses to not get destroyed with this. So I would definitely not be in favor of option two just for that reason. So mine would be three.
And to answer your question, so Lindsay Kimball, our Public Services Director, has been part of the preparation of the process and reviewing the options. And with respect to option three, I, I think it's a, it's a big question for the larger businesses of absorption of these kinds of fees. So for example, if you had a big box at fifty thousand square feet, that would be five-hundred thousand dollars a month, right? Am I doing the numbers right?
Five thousand.
Sorry, ten, ten dollars per, sorry, ten dollars per thousand square feet. Yeah, thank you. Yeah, but so the, the annual total would be very high. And, and so there was a phase in, I, thinking and then gauge the ability to pay and such.
So couldn't you just increase the square feet for the test run so it's a much larger number to see if it works? Use that as, rather than going so low, which would be more expensive?
And the, the thought being that if, yes, if we're, if we're, if, if our intention, if Public Works intentions, staff's intention was to, to move forward with option three, we would do that relatively soon. And we may not incorporate it into this budget cycle, but we would work toward that and with the idea that it would be up and running perhaps by the, by the next budget cycle. So we could understand better what happens to, to, across the board. So I'm responding.
Councilor Hatt, which number do you love?
I'm, I'm for option two with the understanding that the goal is to get to option three at some point, which is what you said in your presentation, correct?
Yes.
I just want to know how we compare with other cities, all these numbers.
I'll have to get back with council on that. I don't know that every city has a roadway improvement fee. The other cities just have general fund contributions and then whatever state, federal tax they have. So I'd have to do a little research on that.
Okay. Well, just not sure that we have the information we need to make a good decision here. In general, I think I'm in, in favor of option three because I want the cost to be proportional to the square footage for the reasons that Councilor Zadi mentioned. I agree with that. I just don't know that the numbers we're looking at in front of us are what we should be using.
And tonight's not necessarily meant to be a decision.
Okay, you're right. Thank you.
But we'll, we'll get an indication and then we can work towards something.
Right. And, and I say that just in regards to, as mentioned, square footage, the actual fee, what that would be for residential versus non-residential, et cetera. I just feel like we need a little bit more honing in on what those numbers actually are. But in general, I'd like to see it to be proportional.
Councilor Ireland?
So where would HOAs fit into this?
I don't know that they would unless they had a business storefront somewhere.
I really think this will really be bad for hotels. You think about every room, going to be You think about every room, gonna be at least ten bucks each.
They're using the highways to get there.
I know, but I I think our economy is really in a spiral anyway, so I'm I'm for one. I'm not going to put any more taxes on businesses. Their property taxes are, they've gone up so much this year that I don't think we can do that to them right now.
Senator Demont.
Couple of questions. When you said you were gonna test it, and I'm trying to understand what I thought I heard, maybe I misheard. But when you said test, you meant you wanted to recommend that we go forward with option two to give you the next year to kind of model option three. Did I understand, is that what you?
It was a, it was just an incremental step, I thought, that we to just to, so that we're not delaying another year. We we get some additional resources and and then work work towards, see if we can find some solution with option three and that we actually put it into our GIS system and into our billing system and see what comes out.
So I heard, I heard it accurately then, it sounds like. I'm curious how you came up with the the, and I mean, I've been in big favor of us doing something different for the businesses. And I mean, I understand what Councilor Zadi's saying, but at this point, they are all paying the same and they're all paying the same as as a resident. So, you know, maybe this isn't perfect, but it's a starting point, but I am curious how you came up to the twenty dollars.
It it was a starting point.
I I would like to see something a little bit more solid when you come back. Because I mean, the the goal in my mind is, to add to the mayor's point of the trips, is to be equitable. I mean, they are putting more use on the roads, granted, they're putting more into the general fund. But if you truly are gonna not take money from the general fund, then that really changes the equation of how you how you fund. Because that was one of the conversation points in in past with even past council when we talked about this, was well, they're already paying, you know, sales tax. So, you know, that's gotta be better understood as far as, you know, what we really would do. I couldn't imagine you're gonna be able to really do just this and not have to take some from general fund. But I mean, but if that's gonna be your base level, that has to be part of the conversation in my mind. I am open to option two, I'm less hesitant on the business portion, although I would like the dollars to make some sort of sense. I do think to some of the earlier points, you know, it's, it shouldn't be hitting, say, a small insurance agency the same as it's hitting Walmart, who's truly causing more traffic on our roads. I really am not super stoked about adding another dollar at this point on residential. But but I'm open to to in general, but I do think you need to vet through option three, cuz I think that's more of the the future state I'd like to see. And, you know, if if, I guess, when you when you bring it back, I'd like to understand, and maybe you know this tonight, actually. What's the, like, the the breakout with the approximately, you say about eight hundred thousand dollars that you would get out of option two? How much of that is from residents versus how much of that is from non-residents? If you don't know that now, you could get back to me, cuz I know we're not making a decision. But, I mean, I wanna understand kind of that that full picture of that option before we we finalize it in the budget.
I think I have it here in my notes, but I won't take the time to fumble for it, I'd say.
No, that that's fine, and I guess, you know, final thought is, I think that if we're gonna do it, it would be important to have some examples of exactly what that would accomplish for us in a budget year. You you know, we would be able to repave one hundred and twelve or, and I know you've done that in the past when we increased that spending. But I I'll see, I would see some value in that as well as I think the residents would as we move forward.
Mayor Brotem.
I too would like to explore option three. I I was a little disappointed to not see that we had made any progress on this conversation for the, you know, over a year. We were talking a year ago about utilizing ITE potentially and having some reason behind what these, what these rates would be. And I think, I don't know if this, I just feel like if we're going to be applying a fee, we really need a strong justification. I know a recent Supreme Court case, the Sheets case, I don't know if that relates only to residential development in terms of the impact fees or if that even relates to this, but there's just more of a need for justification on establishing fees. So I would like us to have some rhyme and reason behind this. I mean, if even if it's like, we know that the ITE trip generation chart says there's nine trips per residential household. And so we can maybe take an average of the different types of commercial uses and say, you know, and and be able to relate those to a certain square footage and then apply option three. Maybe we put a cap on it because it can get large even, I mean, not that I'm, sorry Walmart, you know, not overly worried about them. But, you know, I I don't want it to get too, oh, you know, wieldy, like unwieldy. I think five hundred dollars is probably even to some larger businesses, I don't, you know, wanna know what the right cap is, but, yeah, that's.
Certainly wouldn't wanna chase grocers out of town either.
Amen.
Also, the prices go up and the taxes go up, guys, for every one of us, every citizen. It's not just like they're absorbing it, they've had three million dollars of theft too last year.
Yeah, that's why I don't want it to get huge as a fee, but I.
Electric cars are really the heaviest thing on the road, electric trucks, Amazon trucks, those kind of things.
Can we make sure to exempt senior facilities and those sorts of things? That's the problem right now, they're getting charged to three dollars for no reason, they don't use the roads, many of them. Complain about that, cuz their their facilities are passing it through to them.
I'm okay, I I like option three, but as everybody has said, we need more data. And so if you feel like you need to go with option two for a year to get your data for option three, just bring us back your magic next time. But in detail, so we can understand, talk to businesses and say, this is what it's gonna mean for you. This is what they've worked out, that kind of thing. So I'm fine with you guys going back to the drive board, taking our suggestions, but it looks like we've got twos moving to threes, but then you've got threes saying, people saying that that is their option, so.
It sounds like if we do come back with two as sort of a stopgap, we need to have some good justification behind it and be able to tie it to the impact and be able to explain it. I guess we'll we'll need to discuss that if this, if we want to take that step or if we want to just move toward three and and try to get that right, as opposed to taking people through two, but.
Cuz with either one, I would think affecting economic development, they'd like to know, you know, they have the numbers of how big things are, so people need to know what's coming.
Okay, one last point on, and just what you said and kind of what Mayor Brotem said. I think that looking at what our neighbors are doing for that is gonna be important too, because we earlier tonight talked about how, you know, we're bringing in a lot of businesses and that potentially if we're being more heavy-handed with stuff like that, you know, depending on how big it is, maybe that disincentivizes businesses from wanting to come here.
What else do you need from us, next one?
The next one's easy. Something that needs to be considered, but I'm not recommending any change this year, just I'm not comfortable doing that. We, it's been twenty plus years since that fee was established, that the costs were really gathered up, what the revenues needed to look at. I'm confident that we're applying the current fee structure as it it was intended. We've got really good GIS data and it's, but it's, I I think we we need to take the time to get to get a good update on it and look at all of our project costs and and then look at what this might be. There's other ways to cut this the fee structure too, right now it's a flat residential. You know, thi- this one, whereas the roadway improvement fee is, should be based on trip generation as as a nexus to impact. The stormwater fee uses impervious cover as a nexus to the impact. And there could be different tiers amongst, not all residential lots are the same size and not, and then different businesses have different qualities about the way they're built too. So I think we can fine tune this and I would just say, along with the roadway improvement fee, we look at the stormwater utility fee over this coming time and we do the same sort of updating of the structure and then applying it and see when, seeing what happens. And so our recommendation in this case is just to to not make any changes for twenty twenty-five. It's in the slide deck because we want to keep it in front of you as something, and it could be a companion to the roadway. And if we wind up having some recommendations for some increases, we could stagger them or combine them. There are things that we could do that way, so.
Anybody wanna argue and raise it? Senator Camellia.
Is the ask for a stu-, what is the study and how much would the study be?
We would probably, we have certain amount of services within our, there's all, there's a basically a fixed amount of revenue. So we would have to move some things around to to fund some engineering services to help us with that. It it doesn't, in my mind, have, I I don't know the exactly how much it would be. But I don't anticipate it being a very large number because we already have a lot of GIS capability and we already know what our costs are, it's fairly well fixed. We just would want some help with looking at other cities and how they do their fee and just running, crunching the numbers. So that that would be the recommendation, is that we do that. And we may need to come, it may be enough money that we come back to the council to ask for, need approval. It could be within the city manager's spending authority too, for that, those services.
And I guess my final question is, who is it, I mean, I assume we have this person, but do we have like an accountant that works to help crunch these numbers in general for all our departments? Or how is this piece done? Do we always just hire outside?
Well, so on our our water rate analysis and our sewer rate, which is the next one, we do have a a rate analysis spreadsheet or multiple spreadsheets that are stacked that an individual, he used to be in Public Works and Utilities, is now is over in Policy and Budget, wo- works through those. So we can model those 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 rate changes. Put in different operational costs, different, you know, capital loading, things of that nature and and look at that. We may be able to use him to help us do this, build our own.
I'm just pointing out a possible gap.
Yeah, just, I think for some of the cost of service studies and the fee analyses, you know, sometimes the expertise on, you know, is maybe per that specific item that you're looking at, whether it's transportation or housing or whatever. So sometimes just going externally is helpful. But I was gonna ask if we could, if we're already going to do a cost of service study for this fee, can we potentially expand that scope of the contract and include the transportation component?
So the transportation component, a- actually, one of our engineers did his master's thesis on this very thing. And he's got this stuff built already and we've been basing it off of his. He pulls from, he pulls from practices that have been done and from the Institute of Transportation Engineers, which have all the data on different types of land uses and their impact. So we we have that capability in there. And we talked about the stormwater fee going with our wa- water rate analysis this fall, but we back that out. It's it's probably not necessary to to encumber that, that's a much more complicated process than this one would be. But we, sometimes having that outside help, it brings different viewpoints that we may not see, so.
I don't see any other hands, so the next one.
This is sewer utility, sanitary sewer utility, right? We, and we, so thi- this slide here is just intended to just kind of draw a distinction between the the water side and the sewer side. If you can see the the yellow on here, the different components that make up both the water and the sewer side. Basically, there's operating costs, there's there's debt and transfers that we have, and then there's also what your capital program is. So those are just the big pieces, and what we're talking about is the the right-hand side of the combined water and sewer. We're talking about the sanitary sewer rate here. These rates are established through, you know, we have a financial plan in in place. It estimates the amount of rate revenue and debt financing that you have. You have the the cost of service studies, which is the expense side of the equation. And then the rate design sort of takes what what revenue you need to make your expenses and put it into a form that distributes that amongst your different rate payers. And the other just element here is that per individual, the rate that you, that that household is going to pay or the 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 account is going to pay throughout the year is based on on your water consumption in January through March. The presumption there is that what is coming into your house through your water meter is what is leaving your house through your drain pipes. You don't do it during the summer because you take in a lot more water and a lot of it goes to irrigation many times. So that's what, one of the big things, we always encourage people to to watch their water consumption during those months. It helps out their their bills annually. Little bit more, our capital load, thi- these are just a few of the projects over the next five years that we have. We're, you know, Big Dry Creek Wastewater Treatment Plant, it treats two-thirds of the city's wastewater. We're in the master planning process for that now. Would, there's, there's not a plant replacement that is gonna come out of that, but we do have some major components that need work. We've got a lot of ongoing older pipelines in the city that just, that just, they're suffering from corrosion, it's a rough environment. We've got a lot of concrete pipe in the city that needs to be replaced. And so, over the next five years, we've got right around fifty-eight million dollars worth of work that we've identified. So with with that, we have put that into the rate model that we have in-house and we've been holding it a six percent increase annually. And that's been the case now from what I can tell for the last three years. And so the, that's what is in the model now, it it cau- it results in a balance for us. And so that's the recommend, that will be the rec- staff's recommendation at this point for for twenty twenty-five sewer.
Any input? Senator Demont.
When we did the six percent three years ago, that was on the tail of a lower water rate increase. And at the time, we were told because of the needs, that we needed to do more in the sanitary sewer system. I'm just curious, is that gonna be what you guys are planning out in perpetuity? Or if there's some some thought in how we reverse that that trend or certainly at least cap it into the future? I know that the inflation costs over the last three years haven't helped the situation, but I'm sensitive to the fact that these all, these things all compound on on the utility bill for the residents.
I haven't looked at the model to see what the fifteen-year projection, I don't think it runs out beyond that. So and then we we would need to apply our projections for what we'd need for capital in there and and see what that answer is.
And that's fine, if you don't have it right now, I guess, in order for me to get on board, I'm gonna need to see into the future some years because I wanna, I mean, this compounds every year, six percent now, then six percent. I mean, it just, it really starts piling up, so I'd like to understand at least, you know, five to ten years into the future and what that looks like for us.
I'd like to know what happened with the lawsuit. I'd like to know what happened with the lawsuit with the, wasn't the Dry Creek plant, they did the pipes. Whoever contractor didn't do it right and we had to go after them. Is that part of this cost?
We sent a notice under the Construction Defect Act to the contractor regarding certain pipes on the North Huron Intercept. Because there was settlement on the pipes after they had been installed. We, I don't know, Paul, if Public Works has heard back anything yet.
I have not, but that, the burden associated with that has been placed onto the contractor and they, for a period of time had been keeping up with it, but there was some substantial settlement that had happened and that did not get the compaction on top of the pipe, I think was the main thing. So there's gonna need to be some re-excavation or some other sort of solution to get the compaction. And I, I do recall that that demand letter essentially had been sent, but I haven't heard.
Have they done anything to fix it?
I, I don't, I don't know if we're, if the contractor is going to own it or if they're going to, we're gonna have to call on their performance bond for that. I'm not sure, but that, we are not anticipating, I have to go, I need to probably go look at our, our capital list just to make sure, but I can't imagine we would put that in there as something we're gonna have to pay for.
You know, so the, the project had been secured by a bond.
Yes.
And in order to preserve the city's claim against that bond is the reason the notice was sent out to the contractor. I think I did hear the contractor paid some state fines that had been levied on the same segments as they had committed to doing. So I think that they have lived up to that commitment to pay the state level fines. That was another piece of news, I think, on that project.
Just two questions. I don't know if you're gonna come back with a little bit more information, but it would be helpful to Councilor Demott's kind of request to understand what this means. If we could have a estimate of what this impact would be to the average household. And then is it my, so when you go through and look at all your charges and responsibilities with running the system, is there not just a legal requirement to charge for service? It as, in relation to your, to this being an interprize bond and you have to charge what it's?
I would offer that, yes, under the charter, the city's charter requires that the rates be set in a manner to cover the cost of service. And our bonds also require that rates be set in an amount to cover the cost of the debt service. So there's a sort of a two-part requirement there. There are the rate maintenance covenants that the bonds come with, and then there's the charter requirement that the rates be set in an amount adequate to cover the cost of service.
So it'd be helpful to understand if there's any legal room, if that's the case.
In the cost of service, there, so part of that, we, you know, we've got the operations, we've got equipment and people, material that goes into keeping the system clean, to performing the inspections, to making routine repairs. You know, to some extent, that is discretionary, what we do. But it's highly unadvisable to not do those preventative maintenance things. That could get us into some regulatory trouble when we begin and, and public opinion trouble when we have overflows and that kind of thing. The capital project is, you know, arguably is somewhat discretionary, but if we don't keep up with some of the repair and replacement, again, it might not crash in one year, but over time it's going to add up and be hard, very hard to dig out of. So, you know, to some extent, we've, we have to rely on, on the system that we have in place of our, of our inventory of our system and the condition evaluations that we have and the professional expertise of our operations and engineering staff to come up with some recommendations. And that then leads into the cost of service. And it's, it's hard to cover all of that in a study session and I think it'd be, at some point, we could hold, at any time, have, have a tour of the Big Dry Wastewater Treatment Plan and it really begins to, to, to establish sort of the scale at which the city is providing these services. So, you know, it, we, we, there's a lot that goes into maintaining and operating this and we've gotta have the good people, and I believe we do have that, that are making solid recommendations. But I would hate to just cut our capital back so we could, we don't wanna raise rates. We don't wanna go further than we need to go, but we need to go far enough so that we don't find ourselves, after I've been here five or 10 years and we haven't done anything and it's a mess, and then we haven't said anything and then whoever our city manager is, says, why didn't, you know, how did you let this happen? So, that's what I'm trying to avoid, so.
Yeah, just wanted to say that I'm, I'm more concerned about the allocation of the money each time because the southern part of the city, as I think we've, we've talked about many times, right? Where it's historically neglected from a resource allocation standpoint. I would like to see if you guys have it geographically Westminster. So all those projects you have, if you have it, if you can show how many, you know, the, show the risk by geography? Because I think we need to be investing a lot more money in the southern part versus kind of everywhere. At least for, just to bring them up to where the rest of the city is. I think there's a lot of bursts that happen there and a lot of issues there and we should be prioritizing them.
Anything else you need?
This is just the wrap-up slide here. We've talked about the roadway improvement fee. I think we've, we'll weigh whether we wanna try to take that interim step this year, if we can have some justification on the twenty dollars or not, or something less, versus when do we think that we can come back with something that's more toward option three? And then the stormwater utility, I think I've got good direction there. We're gonna kind of do a similar parallel path with, with that. And then, yeah, sanitary sewer rate increase, our recommendation is a six percent. I think we did hear that we wanna see some justification for that and what goes into that and what's behind it, what the compounding effect is as well. So I've got some good notes.
Can I ask one quick question? On the historic part of Westminster, so that's not serviced by our, all at least serviced by our sewer plant, correct? That goes to?
It's, it's about Ninety Second South is, goes to Metro. But, but the pipelines are out, are.
The pipeline is all under our, so how do, how do you, with the charges to them, so they're paying, like, so if you did a six percent increase, it's the same for them as it is for people that are served by us? And maybe this is probably a bigger discussion, but I guess I'm, I'm not really sure how that charge is and how different that is and how that kind of affects the overall budget. So that would be an interesting conversation at some point.
That, that's a really good question. So we've had the practice for years of having a blended rate because either side of Ninety Second can change differently than the other side in any given year. So sometimes the Metro charges go up much higher than this percentage amount. And then we can control the costs on the other side of the line and have the blended option so that it actually serves a dampener for south of the line for those charges when they come through like that. So, but we will report back some data on that for you. I also wanna make sure that when we report back, we do show you the household impact numbers because one of the differences between the water, we show you percentages, right? Six percent is much higher than our water rate increase percentage, but the relative portion of the sewer fee in your utility bill is much, much lower. So we're starting with a much smaller, a very much smaller number on the sewer side of the equation. So although it might be a percent and a half higher from a dollar impact perspective, it's going to be much lower. And we wanna show you that data so that you can use that to inform.
I, yeah, I think that's really good, especially, you know, if they're, with the, being a blended rate, I'd like to understand how we're gonna, because some of that's outside of our control and I don't know like when that hits versus when we implement ours and like how we can try to stay ahead of that. And the other thing to Councilor Zadi's point that I think would be interesting to see, and I've, I mean, we've had variations of it in the past, but I certainly know of some of the breaks and stuff, you know, south of Ninety Second that are things that have been pushed off. There was one during the water discussion last year that that was used as an example, something we could have done to buy down the rate, which I asked to do. Wouldn't have been the example I would have picked, but it was an example of something that we obviously needed to pay for. But I would like to understand, you know, by year, some of those projects, like where they're at. So like if there is a, a line that's south of Ninety Second or north of Ninety Second, just like where all those projects are, how far or how long they've been on the project list, that we can, as a council, get a real representation of where the priorities are and how long they've been on the plan. I certainly agree that there needs to be more emphasis on the historic part, which is, you know, the oldest part of Westminster, there are needs there that nobody else has because they've been there longer. But the, the feeling of our area is neglected is not, you know, not only historic Westminster. I have heard that in every part of the city about different issues. So for us to be able to make good decisions, it would be nice to actually see a real factual list by some sort of date and priority. I would find that helpful.
I, as part of the 2024 budget, we've got a map of the city that maps out where all the capital projects are. So it's not showing, doesn't have historical, it doesn't show the projects that we didn't fund. But we'll be doing the same thing as part of the 2025 budget. So that's just a piece of what you're asking about.
And I think that it would be, it would be nice to see the things that we didn't though. Then that way we can, we can have a real clear picture. Is that really factual, people's feelings? And if so, great, let's, let's think about addressing them or as a council, being able to at least speak, speak into them, so. But I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
Do we have a reason for executive session?
Thank you, Mayor. There is on tonight's agenda, proposed executive session for city council for a discussion of a personnel matter, a discussion of contract employee review process, goal setting for the acting city manager, and next steps in hiring a city manager pursuant to Westminster Municipal Code, Section 111.3 C1 and Colorado Revised Statute 2464024F1.
I'll go around the room and ask if people are willing to go into executive session and if they're comfortable.
It'll be that, yes?
Amber Mott, yes. Claire Carmelia, yes.
Christine Ireland, yes.
Dave Demott, yes.
Sarah Narmala, yes.
Nancy McNally, yes.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, if that includes the regular portion of tonight's agenda and you're willing to adjourn the meeting, it's 11:37 PM. And I'd ask the clerk to end the live stream and begin.